Good afternoon. In accordance with section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone and have the option of participating via video and audio. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During that time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled. You will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today that wish to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Regarding the procedure of the hearing this afternoon, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with their presentation if desired, and when the committee does not require presentation, applications are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching your five-minute deadline. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room first and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the other speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Now, before we get to this afternoon's item, do we have, we don't have any minutes and no files to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
All right. And I should ask, are there any declarations of interest or the panel that we should know about for the afternoon time slot? We'll also, just for the record note, Mr. Bartolo has stepped out and will be joining us. When he does return, I will ask him if he has any declarations of interest at that time. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any deferral requests in our two P M. time slot?
I don't see any right now.
Fantastic. All right, so we can proceed to item number ten, three thirty-five Briar Hill Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new dwelling. This application was deferred by our committee on January sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Requires a number of variances, including east side main wall height, west side main wall height, F S I, west side yard setback, building length, and front yard soft landscaping. On file, I have material from the applicant, a report from community planning, and a letter of support from three thirty-seven Briar Hill Avenue. That's the immediate neighbor. Okay, we have our agent with us.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the committee. My name is Sia Zanjani from fifteen Allstate Parkway Markham, and I'm the architect, the agent for this application.
Welcome. Sir, I noticed that I'm just looking at the the deferral from January. It does state that the part of the reason for the deferral was that there may be some changes to the variances, and just comparing the public notice from then until now, I do notice there are indeed some changes to this public notice. Perhaps you could just explain for us, just to get us started here, what those changes are?
Yeah, so the the main, the main issue was, there was a couple of issues. One was an inaccuracy in on the on the drawings and and the public notice that went out with respect to the the direction and or the bearing of the side elevation in east-west, north-south. So that was one issue. Also, we had some comments from our next-door neighbor, the same neighbor who provided the letter of support with respect to the building length. Previously, our building length was proposed at eighteen point four-four meters, which was still kind of within within the the what what had been accepted by committee for for application, previous applications. But then we further reduced that to seventeen point eight-three. So that was a substantial reduction in building length. And those those were generally the main, the main reasons for deferral.
All right. I also noticed with respect to variance number six, there's some variance for front yard soft landscaping. That is also changed, I think on the previous notice, there was a variance for landscaping, if I'm not mistaken. Is that that correct? But perhaps some clarification as to what changed there?
We we noticed that change as well, but it's in terms of design, not much substantial really changed. So I'm not aware of exactly why the the wording changed, but the design remains pretty much the same. And that's mainly due to the fact that we have a mutual driveway that's already, that's already paved, and we're just adding a fairly modest-sized driveway to access our garage in addition to that. And that that kind of, that's the reason behind the the variance.
Yeah, it's not the wording that changed. The actual variance has changed. I think the first one was for landscaping on the initial notice, and now we're looking at a different variance, similar but but still different for soft landscaping. In any case, I I presume if my colleagues have any further questions about that, they'll they'll ask. But in any case, we are, we are just dealing with the the public notice that is before us today. So it's it's good to see that.
That's that's correct. Yeah, yeah, we just, with with respect to landscape variances generally, no matter how accurately we depict the the variance, it's usually the the zoning examiners have, you know, they they remeasure everything and often that their numbers do not match ours. So we generally tend to go with what the examiner really puts on paper.
All right, very well.
Making sure that we don't change the design.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak to this item today in person? No. And staff, we don't have anybody online? Okay. Sir, I'm going to ask my colleagues whether they would like a full presentation on this item. All right. It doesn't appear we need a presentation, but we do have a question for you, my colleague, Mr. Nipfil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question has to do with the the very, the very variance that the chairman just asked you about. It says that in figures, it's a lot of, a lot of difference, but perhaps there's an explanation. It says that a minimum of seventy-five percent of the required front yard landscaping must be soft landscaping, and you've only got forty-seven point nine-five percent, which is considerably less. Can you speak to that a little bit and and perhaps explain the the driveways existing, as I understand it, and in the in the early drawings, the early part of the submission, you've got existing paved area beside the driveway, and then later on, you have on your plans, you have a note that the hatched area, which I think is the same area, is in fact sodded. So it's a bit, a little bit confusing.
Absolutely. Just you give me one second. I.
I was referring to your site plan in the in the drawing.
Absolutely. Would it be helpful to to have the site plan on on the screen, just so the members can see?
Staff are gonna pull that right up for us.
Sure, sure. So just I'll I'll start anyways. Yeah, drawing A one. So the, as as it's fairly common with with most of, most of the properties in these neighborhoods, there is a right-of-way, which is essentially a mutual drive between the two homes, which I'm I'm sure you're aware of. That, generally speaking, those already, there's already a hard, hard scapeing that covers those mutual driveways that we generally cannot touch since we need permission from the neighbor if you want to convert them to any any other type of surface. With with some of these homes that we designed, if there's an integral garage, generally, usually what happens is that the the existing driveways or the the mutual driveways do not perfectly align with our garage. And this has created a lot of issues in the past with 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 cars hitting things, hitting buildings and porches and stuff and whatnot. So we we propose a a new, in this case at least, we propose a new fairly narrow driveway that extends to the front property line. But if you if you look at the, anything passed between the property line and the curb line, we actually narrowed narrowed it to to use most of the existing curb cuts. That was partially due to existing tree that needs to be preserved, tree C two. If you scroll down slightly, you will see that tree as well. So again, I'm referring to the diagonal line just north of that 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 tree. So again, the the idea is to 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 access the garage in a safe, safe manner, keep the existing, existing mutual driveway intact, and and also, at the same time, we try to save the tree and minimize any 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 substantial expansion to the curb cut. So, yeah.
That's, that's not, I'm sorry, but then, to me, that's not really clear. The hatching is, appears to be half of the mutual driveway. That's why I'm asking. It says proposed sodded strip hatched, so that.
Oh, I see what you're referring to. My apologies. Okay, so.
To be half of the mutual driveway. So is it, is it still staying saw paved or is it, are you proposing to sod it?
There will be that sodded strip, and then that's, that's, that's more of a technical kind of 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 interest. So what happens is that when we combined our proposed driveway with the existing mutual driveway, in terms of zoning review, then the the width of the driveways is considered oversized because it includes both. So often what plan examiners ask us to do is to introduce a curb or a or a landscape kind of a strip just to ensure that these two stay separated. And that's where that comes from.
Yeah, but I still don't understand. The mutual driveway is hatched. Is it going to stay paved or is it going to be sod?
Yes, absolutely. We have to, we have to, we have to keep it as paved, yeah.
Okay, so and the percentages that you have noted on on the, on the notice of forty, forty-seven point nine-five.
Includes that paved area.
Okay, and then the only soft piece you have is the grass square just below the word walkway.
Below the word walkway slightly, yeah, yeah, the the strip beside the porch and the steps. And then we have a small patch on, referring to the drawing would be just to the left side of the porch and and the the strip.
And the driveway that's on the drawing, you said that's existing?
The mutual driveway is existing. The the one that's that's depicted with a diagonal hatch, the strip beside the building, that's existing. The driveway is being proposed.
Okay, and the proposed driveway is, would you consider doing that in interlocking paving? Because you're you're under the required amount of soft landscaping. And although it doesn't change the percentage, it allows some percolation of water.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, that's something that you're open to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Just to, just to follow up on that previous discussion about the sodded strip, it at least it appears to me so, is there's a, almost like a six-inch strip delineated between the existing right-of-way, which is the current driveway and the new drive. But I think, Mr. Nifil, you may have been reading it as if maybe the whole right-of-way is sodded. That that became clear, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, looks like we can take this into committee. Yes, Mr. Nifil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern had to do with the percentages that are deficient with regard to soft landscaping. The applicant indicated that he would be prepared to provide permeable paving on the driveway surface. So I I think that's probably as good as we can do. I don't see another way of increasing his amount of soft landscaping and still allowing access to the house and access to the driveway or to the garage, I should say. So subject to that, I frankly think the rest of the application is quite, quite acceptable, and I'd be pleased to move a motion of approval.
Yeah, I think there was.
Oh, and there's a, so I'm sorry. There is a planning department requirement built substantially in accordance with the east elevation, I believe, is the wording. My mistake, sorry.
Nope, that's a, that's a good amendment. All right.
Yes.
Yeah. For the new, for the new driveway. Is that great, Mr. Nifil?
For the driveway, yeah.
I apologize to interject, but just to.
For the new driveway, yes.
Yeah, not the existing right-of-way. All right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All right, that's seconded by Mr. Kaboo. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. That application is approved. All right, item number.
Thank you.
Eleven, one thirty-six Fairlon Avenue. Just have Mr. Bartolo returning. Mr. Bartolo, I should ask if you have any declarations of interest? We're good. All right, so. We'll go back to item number eleven, one thirty-six Fairlon Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct in addition to the rear of the existing semi-detached dwelling in conjunction with legalizing the existing enclosed front porch. This application was previously deferred February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Variances for front yard setback for an enclosed porch, building depth, front yard landscaping, permission for front yard parking, front yard soft landscaping, and parking space size. On file, material from the applicant and a memo from transportation. Have our agent with us.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Honzu. I'm from Forty Vogel Road, Richmond Hill.
All right, sir. Good to ask for a presentation from you. We'll get the five minutes up on the screen and the floor is yours.
Perfect. Thank you. If we can pull up the the slides that we submitted for. So as mentioned, we previously deferred on February twentieth. The primary concern for the deferral was in regards to front yard landscaping, which at the time was thirteen point three-four percent. Upon revising the proposal, we've increased the soft landscaping to thirty-two point six-two percent with a demising grass strip as well as additional planter boxes towards the perimeter of the enclosed porch. There's currently right now in the, in the Fairlon block north side, there's, it's the semi-detached houses with full detached houses on the south side. But in terms of the semi-detached dwellings on this street, there's currently forty-two properties, twenty-two of which properties has actually similar landscaping. So if you take a look at slide number four, you can see properties on this block with similar landscaping as what we have proposed at one thirty-six Fairlon. And if you see on slide number five, examples of properties with actually significantly less landscaping compared to one thirty-six as there's approximately forty-one cases of past variances in this area, which ask for landscaping reductions. So it is my belief right now, the landscaping is in, is very consistent with the immediate neighborhood in which we are at. The proposal is mimicking precisely what one thirty-eight as well as one thirty-four Fairlon Avenue is. As one thirty-four and one thirty-six Fairlon has a shared landscaping portion. In terms of the landscaping, if you take a look at slide number two, I just wanted to clarify a couple items. It's very similar to the previous application that you guys have just heard. We have a similar right-of-way which is between one thirty-four and one thirty-six Fairlon. The parking pad is existing. So I do want to mention that there is variance number five, which I believe transportation has also recommented that it is a legal parking space, in which case we we did have a late revision from the zoning examiner, which did remove that variance. So taking into account of the existing parking pad as well as the existing right-of-way as well as access to the primary dwelling, which zoning requires, you know, one meters of unobstructed path to the primary dwelling, in which case I believe we've already tried to maximize the most space we are able to accommodate for lands, for soft landscaping. Similarly, we had the previous application only had landscaping at the demising portion as well as a small portion in front of the existing porch. We've since taken into the previous committee's recommendations to fully wrap the perimeter of the planting to increase the green space in the front. I believe every other app, variance that we've requested for is in sync to the neighborhood conditions such as the the proposed lengths, the front yard setback, which is existing as everything else on the street. Because our property line ends about halfway to the sidewalk, it does limit the amount of landscaping size in our overall calculations because it's, we have significantly less space to work with. And then in terms of building length, because we are going over, like I said, the rear addition is only a single-story addition as opposed to, you know, one thirty-eight, which has a similar length for a full two-story or one thirty-four, which also has a similar setback as what we are asking for. So I do thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have with regard to the variances presented.
Thank you very much. I just confirm, nobody else is here to speak to this item? And staff, we don't have anyone else online. All right. I have a question regarding the porch enclosure. I, you know, I'm taking a look on Fairlon, taking a look on this street. It seems to me, at least just from looking in the immediate context, that generally speaking, the porches on this street are open and while I do acknowledge there are some porch enclosures that tend to often only apply to a portion of the porch. So perhaps you could just provide a little bit of planning rationale or support that may, I guess, assage my concern regarding that variance for the front porch enclosure?
The front porch enclosure is primarily due to the setback, which we are actually adjacent because we share a demising wall with one thirty-eight, sorry, yeah, one thirty-eight Fairlon, which has a similar enclosure. So we're just trying to also mimic basically what, you know, adjacent properties are to, you know, give it the full aesthetics of a complete building structure as well. Like you mentioned, some of the properties on here do have enclosed porches. I do understand that majority of the forty-two do have open or partially enclosed. But that's also due to the location of where the the sidewalk is. So because our door access on the left side to enclose part of it doesn't really make sense, the building as it's going to be sort of like an exterior front yard sort of storage room. And because it's such a small and it's very close to the street, it's just more practical to have it closed and then this provides additional, you know, barriers for the actual primary building compared to the street and it's, you know, this midtown area is constantly under construction as well, so the front yard porches do get considerably dirty as well.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. I should also ask as a matter of clarification, were there any modifications to the variances? I I thought I heard maybe a different number for the soft yard landscaping that was was said based on what compared to what's on the notice. I just any modifications or-
Yes, if you see-
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. If you see slide number one, I did actually write down the variances for the previous application as well as the current revised one.
All right, so there are some changes. Let's pull up the public notice. There's six variances on there. Just starting with variance number one, just identify which variances are being modified and what those modifications are.
So we modify variance number three for front yard landscaping. The the current one is what it stands now at nine point two nine, sorry. So nine point two nine meters, whereas, so I'm just trying to pull up the old one here.
Oh, so that nine point two nine is still the same, right?
It's the current number. The previous number was actually lower.
That's all, no, that's all I need to know. I just wanna I just wanna make sure that the numbers, the variances on the public notice are still, on the most recent public notice, I should say, are still up to date. And that there hasn't been any modification. So there's no modifications to the public notice?
The only item is number item number four, a parking space may not be located in the front yard. The zoning examiner has actually removed this from his notice.
Okay. So you'd like to you'd like to delete number four?
Yeah, we can remove number four, so there would be five variances we're asking for today and not six.
Okay. And I just to confirm, no other changes to the other five variances?
Correct.
Okay, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you. All right, it looks like I can take this into committee, so sir, thank you for your submission. Let's now take this into committee for a brief discussion and decision.
I guess I can start off the conversation there, Mr. Chair.
Sure, yes, Mr. Bartolo, please.
So I mean, the the big, I suppose, the big item for me is the percent landscape item there. Obviously, it's, you know, it's numerically, it's it's quite low. And then I look at the actual site plan and the circumstances of the site and the neighborhood and I I believe what they're proposing is consistent with the neighborhood. It's all over the place, to be honest. And with these small frunged semi-detached houses and it's an existing condition, I'm not sure that there's any other way to have a driveway, a way to get to your front door and meet the landscape. I don't think it's actually achievable, like in any proper way, right?
Without losing the parking altogether?
Without losing the parking altogether. So understanding that condition, while I would normally not support something that is that low of a value numerically, I think I can get behind that and if I can get behind that, I can get behind the rest of the application.
Yeah. I'm I do recall this from the previous hearing and I think if I my memory is correct, I think we the existing condition is actually worse on the soft landscaping and I think what we'd done is we'd we'd kind of looked over the site plan to see if there's any give in terms of where they could add, so. To the applicant's submission, it does look when they came back to us, they did improve. You can see that planter bed actually wraps around the porch. They're trying, yeah, so I I will say I I do appreciate that effort. And I I I agree with your submission that it is a bit of a challenging site. They're they're limited in terms of what they can offer. I saw your head nodding, I thought, okay. Yeah, okay. Mr. Bartolo, would you bring us a motion perhaps?
No problem, Mr. Chair. I will put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the following conditions, that variance number four be deleted. That is all. There are transportation comments. Bear with me for one second.
Standard condition they're asking for?
And I'll also make it subject to the condition noted in the conclusion section of the transportation memo attached.
All right, thank you for that. Do I have a second or Mr. Niffle? All in favor? That's unanimous. Your application is approved, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, item number twelve, one. Leona Drive. The purpose of this application is a proposal to construct a new two-story garden suite on top of an existing detached garage. This application was previously deferred from our March sixth, twenty twenty-five hearing. We have a number of variances, rear yard setback, north side yard setback, south side yard setback, ancillary building height, eve encroachments into a north side yard setback and east side yard setback and floor area. On file material from the applicant, report from community planning correspondence, or sorry, correspondence, I should say, with community planning as well as a letter of objection from the immediate neighbor. We have our applicant with us in person. Good morning, welcome back.
Good morning, sir. Nice to be back. My name is Greg Ewens with Batory Planning and Management, thirteen forty-five Kingston Road. I have a presentation today. Staff are able to pull that up. We are here requesting seven variances today to convert a partly constructed garage building to add a second floor, two-bedroom apartment unit. The variances largely result from the sighting of the partly complete garage, which was approved via an O L T decision in twenty seventeen. We have a slide two, please. Yeah, the the site, thank you, is at the the corner lot, the northeast corner of Andale and Leona. It backs onto a treed walkway or trail that's part of the Glendora Trail, Glendora Park, just to the east, southeast, and the area is generally low-rise residential in character. However, it is located very near to the intersection of Shepherd and Young and the confluence of transit connections there. It's an area where intensification is proposed and contemplated. Next slide, please. This is the site. There's a detached house on the site right now and you can see at the back of the site there. Foundation partial structure of the garage that was approved, the O L T. The the garage is the subject of the variances. There are a series of them. I'll go into them in a sec. There's also a series of trees at the back part of the site that are, if there, actually, if you go to the next slide, sorry. Next slide, please. Yeah, one of the reasons we were asked to go back and do some more work was to provide some context about the rear of the site and the grading. So you can see here, there's a number of pictures on both of these slides that show kind of the treed area with slopes from west to east at the back of the properties on Leona. And this condition continues up toward the north on the the other lots that get progressively a little bit less deep. One Leona is quite a deep lot. It's about sixty meters to the deepest part. Of note, we are not injuring or removing any trees as part of this proposal. When the application, yeah, so we wanted to go out and take these pictures to provide a better view of what's happening at the back of the site and where the current foundation is located. Next slide, please. I note the site is within a major transit station area, council approved, with a minimum density requirement of three hundred and fifty people and jobs per hectare. If you can move forward a few slides, I'm just cognizant of time. So the in twenty twenty-four, the client elected to apply to add a second floor to the garage. You can see the site plan here with the footprint of the garage. This is deferred in November, so there could be more information provided. It was also deferred in March as there were comments from planning staff and transportation staff. We have since met with transportation and planning staff and addressed their concerns. One of the other things that we were asked was to show how this would look in context if a similar approach was replicated on the adjacent sites. One thing I note here, and this is relevant to both the footprints and all of the setbacks, is that the setback from the house, which is required to be four meters and the bylaw is seventeen meters. So we're setting the the, just by virtue of where the garage is approved, it's setback a ways from the house, which has a significant impact on ameliorating impacts on the north property. And as of right condition would be could be within four meters of the house and it would much greatly impact the property to the north. We even have a rear yard setback variance. It's setback quite a ways, but I note there's an offset condition at the back, so it's only a pinch point where that applies. As I said, we've met with staff from transportation and planning and resolved their concerns. Let's see, next slides, please. If you can go to the, yeah, that's that's the same drawing. We show setbacks. This is if adjacent owners approached their sites in similar ways with similar dimensions, but more as of right footprints. And the section there, I think this is an important drawing. This relates to variance four. You can see that we've kept the second floor as with a small floor-to-ceiling height as possible to maintain a livable space but not exceed it. The actual height from grade at the front of the garage is six meters, which is the requirement for a garden suite. Because the grade slopes to the east and a bit to the north, grades measured from actually into the foundation and that triggers the the height variance. But we've also tried to set the building back from the north a little bit to assist with the conditions of the north. And you can see that there, the eaves which are required as two of the variances, those would be projecting if we built the as-of-right garage anyway. They have to be there for stormwater management. We don't want drainage onto the neighbor's property, so that that's those would be there if it were a one-story garage regardless. Next slide, please. I also note that if we were to tear out the foundation here and put this in a an as-of-right location, it's a tremendous waste of time and construction materials. We're trying to utilize as much of it as possible, which is consistent with the objectives of the garden suite policies. There's two more slides I would love to get to. I'm sorry, there's a lot of background on this. You can see the west elevation here demonstrates a similar approach. There's two slides. This is an update from the previous hearing. As I mentioned, we've talked to staff and transportation and planning. We've successfully addressed their concerns. We have tried to reach out to the owner to the north on several occasions. They haven't responded to us. We tried from March until now. And we've we've put in a lot of effort in that regard. I also note that since that North York planning staff have tabled a preferred recommendation changes to the official plan as part of the North York Secondary Plan Review, and there's two maps here. And this shows a proposed land use designation change to mixed-use areas on the site and a height requirement of a one-to-one right-of-way width, which on this street would be nineteen to twenty meters, so a mid-rise type height. So this is, as it's in the P M T S A, it's in the North York Secondary Plan area. This is a recommendation that's coming to council to convert this site and others in the area into mixed use of a lower scale than you would expect in the core.
Just gonna ask you to wrap up.
Yes.
We will have some questions, but I just gotta-
Conclusion slide is next. And really, you know, in my view, this meets the four tests. It's it's in a P M T S A. It's where North York staff consider a certain contextual amount of intensification. And I think a two-bedroom suite above a garage is a very modest amount of intensification in this area. It's been designed to account for the O L T decision, but also to try and minimize impacts on the property to the north to as great a degree as possible. It it meets a lot of city objectives here, whether it's E H O N, the P P S, or the current and in to be amended official plan objectives. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, questions right now for our agent? Yes, Mr. Niffle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You got approval for the garage and you started to pour the foundation. Is that correct?
I didn't specifically, the the client-
The owner.
Yeah, they they would have, they made a decision at some point through building the garage structure to, I guess, in light of the recent garden suite permissions, to look at adapting the structure to that.
Okay, so the the proposed, the requested north side yard setback. The 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 foundation that was poured for the garage doesn't comply with that?
That's correct.
So what's existing is non-compliant?
What's existing reflects the O L T decision that allowed the garage to be in that location. So the if if-
So it just to clarify, because I'm I'm not understanding this. So the O L T decision allowed a point four eight setback from the north property line?
That is correct, for a one-story garage.
Just for the garage, yeah.
Yeah, and so-
Clear, okay.
And so what we tried to do was step the second story back further from that as far as we could to try to make up the difference.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions right now? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you for having me back. My name is Stefan Yadesku. I am the neighbor to the north of number one Leona. I'm here to protest this for various reasons, but some of-
Oh, address, I think he, address there again?
Number three Leona Drive.
The immediate, the immediate neighbor to the north.
Immediate neighbor, correct.
All right.
So I'm here to protest on a bunch of different issues. However, my main problem is that the building is too tall. As previously stated, when the guys were doing a renovation, they basically took the fill and they raised the back of the property. They raised the elevation roughly another meter or so. If you're looking at the pictures that I I sent to you guys, it shows that the property for the garage where the garage starts, the back of where the garage ends to the foundation, it's roughly eight meters above the ground level. So if we're going up another two levels from that point in time, I'm going to be staring at a structure in the backyard that's eight meters tall, minimal. There's there's no other way about this. My neighbor, the architect right here, said that if I was to build the property, sorry, if I was to build another garden suite in the backyard, it would match what's built there. It's not going to match. It's going to be two meters shorter or three meters shorter than what they have built, minimal. I don't have any intention of building this, but that's that's the reality. By raising the front so high, they've caused a problem right now with the water like flowing to my property that wasn't there before. So they might be installing eve shafts, but I already got a huge amount of runoff when they raised the property. It cuts through the back. If you're looking from the from the back, when you're walking in that ravine, you can see that the cross. I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see the pictures, but it crosses, this is what I'm staring at from my side. This is the top where the foundation ends. That's a fourth, that's a four by eight sheet of lumber right there. So that gives you guys a little bit more context about how high the structure is above ground from my side. The gentleman said that they did not injure any trees, yes, during the construction, they actually cut down. I don't know if you can see right there, there's about seven or eight smaller trees that don't belong to the city. However, without even asking or consulting me, they just dug right beside these trees, ripped out all the roots of these trees, causing it to be unstable. Up to this date, they still have not removed these trees that can possibly fall in a strong wind, causing harm and danger to to me and my family. And I still have to put up with the fence, a safety fence over there because they haven't done anything to to fill in the spot or to even remove the the sticking out parts of rebar that goes when they pour the foundation, the left the left rebar is taken out from from the cement wall. It's like two or three inches taken out of the wall. And that's it. I'm objecting to to this property, to this to this house. I think that already the region is being intensified. We have a lot of different larger buildings coming up on Young Street, so there's a lot of density coming up into the area. We have a hard time already with all the traffic that we have. Increasing the density too much in that area is not a great idea, as far as I'm concerned. It would remove all the light from my backyard if I did it to my name. If I built another one in my backyard as well, it would remove all the light from my neighbor's backyard. It's not a great idea. Okay?
Thank you. I have a question for you. I'm trying to get a, just an understanding about the the grading. Because I think this file ultimately really comes down to the fact that you're dealing with a the the grading of the law seems to affect what's being proposed. And to your submission, what it's resulted in is, in fact, a a foundation or a footing that is raised quite high out of the ground. When I look at the survey and the site plan, my understanding, I'm I'm going to ask the same of the agent, is that the backfill may have been necessary to facilitate a proper slope to the garage? slope to the garage? But I don't, I'm, I'm not sure of that, right? And, and even if it does, it doesn't necessarily warrant additional height. But I'm, I'm trying to understand what essentially happened with the, the lot grading here? If this is really a condition of a misgraded, a misgraded lot, or is a condition of, you know, the, the applicant trying to construct a garage with a driveway that does not result in an inverse slope?
So as far as I know, previously, the home that was there, which is covered by the footprint of the new home plus more, by the way, which is a lot bigger than what the previous home was, there was a garage underneath the home, basically. So they would drive from the street, they would drive into the garage at the bottom of the home.
So it was an inverse slope?
Exactly.
At the time, okay.
They actually had space, like it was like possible, and the home was a lot closer to the street than this garage that's being proposed is. So there was no issue whatsoever keeping the same slope and driving the car into a garage if they had kept the original level.
Okay.
By raising the level, it was not, this is not correct what they've done. They raised it too much.
I, I hear where you're coming from, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not okay.
I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. No? Okay. Thank you very much for coming down again. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's turn back to our agent now.
To you, Mr. Chair, we have another neighbor online.
Okay, yeah, let's hear, before we get back to our agent, we'll hear from our, our other neighbor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, apologies, I can't really hear you very well, so, yeah, I, I'll make it pretty short, so I think that some of the things have been previously brought up.
Hold on, I'm, I'm gonna interject, sir. Could you just give us your human address for the record and then you can, you can go?
Oh, apologies. My name is Weston Trot, I'm from seventy-nine Andale Drive.
All right, thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. So my concern is just on the overall size for the secondary property. It's not with a garden suite itself, it's just the height and the overall size of it is kind of well in excess of what the, the bylaws put forward. So I think it's one meter over on height, and the gentleman previously already addressed the, the grading one, so previously this area where the garage is was, was substantially lower, and it's been brought up to, I guess, street level where it previously wasn't to it. So, and, and the secondary, as, as it's a garden suite, it's larger, to just give a bit of context, it's about as large, it's not a, what I would consider a garden suite, it's the size of a, a house of the majority of the houses on the street. And as a secondary property, there are a secondary structure, the main one, as the other gentleman already said, is already quite large. So it's a large house, Ariamplus, and then this isn't a, what I would call a secondary suite or garden suite, it is a secondary house that's being placed on the property, given the dimensions that have been put forward. If it was of a smaller stature and something more in line with what the bylaw says, then we have less of a concern with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trot. Just to confirm, which address are you at again?
At seventy-nine.
Andale, I see, okay. I just trying to...
Right across the...
I understand, so you've, you've faced the, you've faced the property. Okay, thank you for that.
That is correct.
Questions for my colleagues? None? Okay, thank you, Mr. Trot. Staff, do we have anyone else online? Okay, and no one else here to speak to this item? We'll turn it back to the agent now?
Thank you, sir.
And I just to preface, just if you could provide, I'll ask you the same question that I asked the immediate neighbor with respect to the grading. I'm trying to understand what resulted in a, a footing of this size, if it, it is just a, a result of the lot itself and trying to achieve a, a, an inclined slope rather than a, a decline slope?
Sir, that is my understanding. When the original garage design was developed and it proceeded to the OLT, it had basically, it had the same dimensions of what's been built up to a certain point, including the grading and the foundation and, and the footings. And so it stopped, because we're now in the process where we're requesting a two-bedroom unit of the second floor. But all of that reflects what was considered by that decision. And to regrade and to take out the foundation would be challenging, and it would result, as you said, in either an inverse driveway or something that might create worse drainage conditions on the properties to the north, given the slopes in this area.
Okay.
I, I have a few other...
Yeah, no, please. So I, we'll get a full five minutes for you to respond, should you need it. And the floor is yours. I, I suspect my colleagues may have questions as well at the end.
Thank you. So the, we, we are aware of the concerns from the, the property north to the north. We've reached out to speak with them on a number of occasions. We have, our client has. It takes two willing parties to address these considerations. I'm, I'm happy to do so. We, I, we've talked after the last hearing, when we were both out in the hallway, about this as well. And so that's, it, it's, it's hard to make progress on those issues, like I said, when you don't have two willing parties, despite our efforts. The, I, I will say with regard to the height and the setbacks, and I'll, I mentioned this in my presentation, if the project was to be built in an as of right condition, and you can see it on the, the presentation where it's sighted, eight, seventeen or so meters back, the, the impacts to the property to the north, I believe, would be greater, even though from a metric height perspective, the building might be marginally shorter, it might be marginally further away from the north property line, it would have a roughly identical footprint. And due to the grade and how grade is measured, you would still have some portion of a footing that was visible above ground, depending on how far back you had set it. I think, given the options on a site like this, if you can put the suite as deep as possible at, at the site, you do so, acknowledging the impacts that height and overlook and other issues may have on properties to the north. And that the, the, you know, the amenity area in the rear yard closest to the house to the north is less impactful, less impacted by a building in this location than it would be if one were moved much further up to the site. Again, the, the grading and drainage, as, as we know, grading and drainage drawings and information is required at the building permit stage, that has to be contained on site. Part of the eave troughs will do that. The existing structure isn't a complete structure, and so if there are grading issues and drainage issues right now, that, that gets addressed when it's complete and there's a, a final building permit on the site. We've consulted with urban forestry on this as we reach out to them when we submit applications. I like to know especially in a treat context like this, if there are any issues. They've registered no concerns each time this application's been before committee. If we have to seek any permits, we don't anticipate any permits to injure a tree, but we will, of course, because that's required to proceed with these, per council's decision on garden suites. From seventy-nine Andale, if you look to the north, if you look at, pull up the elevation, and I'm almost done, if you pull up the building elevation, you'll see the, the ground level, the difference between, yeah, actually, that one, just the section actually is helpful. The ground level there, looking up, that's six meters. So the, the difference in height that's more perceptible, where the footing is shown, comes really from the north side. There's less of a difference in height to the north of seventy-nine Andale when looking in that direction. Again, it's, it's also roughly the height of what you would expect for an as of right garden suite in that location, considering the constraints on this site and the previous decision and the existing footing. Finally, there are several criteria in the bylaw which regulates the form of a garden suite to ensure that it is incidental and subordinate to the main dwelling on the site. Primarily among them is a provision that requires the floor area of the suite to be less than the dwelling, than the main dwelling, which it is in this case. The only reason the footing is larger than the garden suite bylaw, again, is because of the footing that was poured per the OLT decision. If there was an opportunity for us to change this, to bring it into compliance, we would happily do so, but that results in considerable work on site and probably more nuisance to the neighbor to the north and potentially other issues when everything's dug out. So I'll, I'll stop there. This is a challenging one. We've, we've tried to approach this in a way which appreciates the, the different perspectives here. We've talked with staff extensively and they have no objections, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Questions? Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thanks for the, the presentation, the submission. I, I understand the existing condition today. I understand what's on the drawings, right? I guess my big question is, when I look at the survey, which was done back in 2016, and I look at the grades on that, and I look at the grades that are being proposed here today, it, it looks like they raised everything about a meter and a half to one point six, one point seven meters, depending on the air, like, I don't understand how they got from 2016 to today.
The, the survey that was done in 2016, sir, would have predated the OLT decision where the, the grading and sighting drawings for the garage would have been considered.
So I guess if I follow the chronology, 2016 they do the survey, OLT makes a decision, they start building in accordance with the OLT, which results in the concrete wall that the neighbor to the north has shown us, correct?
That's correct.
Which is permissible as of today if you built your as of right garage.
That is correct.
And then we're asking for an additional height on top of that. So the, I suppose the, the minimum condition that he can expect is that the existing concrete plus the one-story garage and what you're asking for on the other end is the, the drawings that are here before us, so...
That's correct.
At, at minimum, he's gonna be looking at a, essentially a two-story structure from his yard, no matter what. Is that a fair statement?
Roughly.
Plus or minus, right?
Plus or minus, yes.
Yeah, okay. I think I, I understand. It's, it just seems like a strange grading condition overall.
It, it is, and going out on the site, it's, it's clear that that's the case as well. It's, again, we're, we're sort of boxed in literally to a, a certain spot on the site, and what we've done with the second floor, lower floor to ceiling, lowest we could do really, and trying to set that back, having regard for structural considerations, and, and to maintain a two-bedroom unit, all of those informed our design choices here to try and mitigate those impacts above, above that story. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much to our agent and those who have come down to speak in opposition. I'd just say a few words. I, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with this file at this point. I, I sat on some previous hearings where this was deferred. I think this is now the third time I'm reviewing it. I think I've got a good grasp. I'm, I'm, I am glad that the parties were able to come down today, put forth their submission, and hopefully we'll, we'll have a decision rendered on this and some closure. I'll open it up to my colleagues for comment. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I appreciate what the, the current applicant has done to try and overcome some of the impact of this very high building from the, as viewed from the property from the north. I wasn't aware until today that the setback of OLT was relative to just a garage, and because I was questioning why the, why the setback from the north property line would need to be given today, and now I understand that. It seems to me that the OLT reviewed this application as a garage, and as a garage felt that it was reasonable. I don't think you could read into it that they would have assumed that there'd be an addition on top of the garage and that there would be the elevation change, which, which I think completely undermines what the objectives are here. I, I don't think there's any way of downplaying the impact that this has on the neighbor to the north. I think it's totally unacceptable. I appreciate what the applicant's done to try and set the building back at the top, but what we've got is a two, two-car garage, not a one-car garage, a two-car garage and a two-story garden suite. And I would argue it's too close to the property to the north, and given the exposure of the, of the foundation, it's much too high as viewed from the property to the north. I'm unable to, I'm unable to support the application, but I do appreciate the applicant's attempts to try and make it a bit better. I, I just think the objective here in this case because of the foundation is flawed.
Yeah, I, I'll certainly point out, I appreciate that second story being shifted away. I think it makes our decision certainly a lot harder, because there are certainly, there are intentional moves being made by the applicant to address the neighbor. That is, I think, undoubtedly evident. But still, to your submission, you are still left with quite a big, it's almost a story really, that, that footing. You know, and it, I don't know, I don't know if it's enough, right, to, to warrant the, the heights as being requested, that, that shift. Mr. Bartolo, Mr. Kubu, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, I think, as you said earlier, Mr. Chair, we've witnessed the three hearings on this matter, and we've had a better idea, and I would like to concur with Mr. Niffel that there's one part which we are almost discovering or getting a better sense of today that we did not get earlier. If, and it appears the applicant is really taking advantage of some of the pieces, the, the north side neighbors have put clearly their points, which initially I was really of the opinion that the applicant, as of right, will have to build the, 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 the structure. I've definitely changed my mind. At this point, I completely believe that the right, the, the north neighbor would not be able to enjoy, or not that it would not be able to enjoy, but the way the property has been moved from 2016 to what would not meet or make me feel comfortable supporting this application at this point.
Fair enough. All right. I don't know, Mr. Bartolo?
I'll, I'll put in my two cents for what it's worth at this point. When I look at the height that's actually being asked for, for the ancillary building, it's ninety-nine, they're asking for one additional meter over what is permitted, right? So when I think about it from an impact point of view, and I say, if they max out that garage to the maximum height they're permitted, what's the marginal difference in effect on the neighbor to the north? Because they're allowed to do it up to six meters on top of that existing very large foundation footing.
Yeah.
Right? And then I think to myself, is it, is it really that big of a difference between building a massive garage or building a smaller garage and a garden suite on top?
Yeah.
Because what we're talking about is ninety-nine centimeters. And, and when we sum all of this up, really that's what it's about, assuming that we're okay with the, with the setback from the OLT decision previously and all of that. So when I think about it from that perspective, and I think about it from the perspective of the neighbor to the north who's here, and I think if I'm standing in my backyard, is plus or minus a meter going to make a meaningful difference? Right? Because we can't stop the garage from being built at a very large scale, to be honest, right? It's, it's allowed. It's gone through the process, it, it'll, presumably if we say no to this, it's going to get built, right? So when I think about it from that way, like, is it, is it that much more of a difference? Right? I, I don't think so. I think this whole grading situation, from what I've seen previously to what was approved through the permit process previously and all of that, I think it needed some more consideration, but the earth is where the earth is today, right? And there's nothing we can, we can do about that, honestly. And when I look at the design of what's being proposed, it's a good-looking little garden suite, to be honest, right? It, it's nice, it's well thought out, and in ninety percent of other circumstances, I don't think I'd have a problem with it.
Yep.
Right? And even if you put this thing in the middle of the lot, you would still have a very large wall against you, right? So I, I struggle with this one a little bit, because I think the grading has screwed everything up. I don't think it's actually a bad design, and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this difference of ninety-nine centimeters making an impactful change on the neighbor to the north. Is one meter gonna make a huge difference? I suppose that's a matter of perspective, but ultimately, that, that's where it sits right now, right?
Yeah. I think my, I, you've, you've shared a lot of my thoughts, Mr. Bartolo. I, I feel, actually, I agree with everything that you've said on this one, because I, I think under normal circumstances, this would be an excellent spot, frankly, for a, a garden suite. There's nice, deep lot, minimal impact at the rear. It's just that north adjacency that really is as a result of a, I just think, ill-consideration of, of grading. You know, Mr. Kubu, I, I don't think it's perhaps nefarious, maybe they, you know, started to build their garage and realized, you know, we want to add a garden suite, but at some point, you have to contend with what you've already built. you have to contend with what you've already built. And I think that's the problem here. They've already started building the garage. Uh, and it's, it's almost too late to now go and change it because you have to contend with that large footing adjacent to the north neighbor. Um, unless you rip it and re-rear the backyard, yeah. Um.
Mr. Chair, I also say, I really appreciate the job, the work that the applicant did. Uh, I know one of the reasons whi- which was different initially was to allow them to speak
Yeah.
with the neighbors and they've really done a great job.
They've done a commendable job, yeah, responding to it, yeah.
Yeah, they've done a good job. Uh, I'm just so uncomfortable. Um, yeah, so uncomf- at same, it's, it's, it's sort of mixed feeling because I think when I reviewed this application, my thought was really, yeah, they've done what they needed to do.
Yeah.
But there just one fact that I found out, which makes that maybe when, uh, which is affecting my, my decision-making process here.
All right, fair enough. Uh, thank you, members, for that discussion. Uh, perhaps a motion? Mr. Niffel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, notwithstanding the, uh, the comments, um, about the applicant's um, endeavors, which I, again, I appreciate, I, I'm, I'm wondering if the same applicant had been the, the initial designer, if we'd be here, if we'd not perhaps overcome the problems, but that's, that's, uh, conjecture. I, I'm afraid that I would, uh, I have no, uh, no alternative but to move that this application be refused for the reasons I mentioned earlier.
All right. Do I have a second or for that motion? Okay, Mr. Kubu, all in favor? All right. Uh, and I'll, I'll just stand down my vote on this one. Uh, okay, so the motion carries, the application is refused. Okay, please hold on. The applause. All right, uh, staff, members, how are we doing? Uh, do we need a five-minute relief break or should we finish up the last, uh, three items of our two P M slot? We okay? All right. Okay, item thirteen, four oh three Melrose Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a second-story addition to the existing dwelling in conjunction with other interior and exterior alterations. We have, uh, some variances, west side, uh, setback for a reconstructed porch, side main wall height, lot coverage, building length, building depth, canopy encroachment into a side yard setback, rear deck area, driveway width, number of stories and front yard landscaping. On file, I have material from the applicant. Our agent with us. Oh, welcome. Thanks for coming down this afternoon.
Yes, I, Andrew Marshall. I'm at twenty-eight Waxom Road.
All right, and you are the agent?
I'm the agent.
All right, and, uh,
The owner's son is in the audience too.
Okay. Um, and, uh, just to confirm, we have, uh, uh, anyone else here on this item? Or online? Okay, let's just, I just wanna confirm if there's any other parties present for this item. Uh, and we can know how to proceed. Um, all right. While staff is waiting, uh, sir, I'm gonna ask for, uh, presentation, representation. We'll get the five minutes up.
Sure. Um, essentially what we have here is a renovation to a home, uh, that was built in roughly, uh, seventy, nineteen seventy-two. Um, so we had a couple issues that we had to contend with, or which basically when you look at those, uh, the variances requested, uh, eighty percent of them are existing conditions. Um, so if you want me to go through one by one, I can go through it. Um, but let me just explain the, the, the property first.
Yeah.
We basically have an existing downslope garage, uh, area where there had been roughly five, six feet built over top of where that front of the garage was. And that's where our porched entry was, which was covered. From there, you had steps down to that, uh, garage and then you had a walkway to the, to the front of the property. For increased landscaping, we removed that walkway. The driveway has not changed at all in size. We made the, the garage on the inside a little better, uh, for usage. But that, uh, affected us in a negative way because we had now variances, uh, which, uh, comes back to the existing driveway be considered, uh, undersized or oversized. Um, but it's actually in existing driveway condition. The, as far as landscape and all that, we've actually improved it. Um, when we're building over top of what was a porch before, we had a very low ceiling height over the garage just as a technical matter to put in new floor joists, insulate, all that stuff. We actually had two opportunities. We could either lower the existing garage, which wouldn't be permitted, or we could raise the floor above where that garage door was. Therefore, what we did is we raised the whole floor, uh, of the, the, the main floor of the house to, to that higher level. We only raised it, I think, a foot six or a foot four, fairly minimal. We made sure that the overall building height of the house was maintained, so within the bylaw. But the second kicker, and this is the biggest kicker of it, is that the existing slab of the gra- the house is at such a height that the basement is actually considered the first floor. That's why we've got, it's being asked as a, a three-story house. It's not a three-story house. It's a two-story with a great high garage. Um, so we made sure that we increased the landscaping on the front of the property. We didn't change the driveway. We made sure we kept within the height limitations. But we had some other things that we had to contend with, and that was, it raised the floor. I can't get rid of it being considered a three-story house. That's where the bylaw is. So eighty percent of these variances, existing building length, existing building depth, we're not touching those. Because of the second floor, uh, first floor being considered in the basement, that's why we have a variance for the rear deck. If it were a, a rebuilt house, we wouldn't have a variance there. So as, we, we really tried as much as possible to work within the bylaw, but basically we're dealing with eighty percent of existing conditions.
So. Fair enough. Thank you for that, uh, submission. Um, you noted that, uh, you'd improved the soft landscaping in the front yard and there, I, I think I overheard you say there was a, a walkway that was removed?
I would say it was about a three, uh, three foot, uh, one meter wa- with a walkway.
I'm gonna ask staff just to pull up the site plan. Maybe just show us, uh, what has changed, uh, to improve the, that landscaping in the front?
We, we removed it. We removed the walkway.
Yeah, just, uh, clarify for me which walkway you're referring to. Are you talking about the walkway, the stairs that come right off the drive or?
No, there was a walkway on the west property line.
Right along the west property line?
Right on the west property line.
That's where I was getting to. Okay, so, uh, you're telling me, so those, um, those pavers, so the three, uh,
The three steps.
Three steps across.
That more or less was like there as well before, except we're, I think it was about three feet wide and we're making it, I think, four feet wide. Just so that the, the width of the steps going up to the main front door are similar to the steps that are at the turn.
That's the passageway from the drive to the front door. Uh, but let's just go back for a second to the existing walkway that carries all the way to the sidewalk, right at the property line?
It was right at the property line.
That, I mean, I look at that, that really probably could be all soft landscaping.
Yeah, we removed it.
You removed it, it's all soft.
It's all gone.
Okay, fantastic. Uh,
So, so our landscaping spa- space open, space in the front has probably gone from thirty-five percent up to the forty-four. It might've even been only thirty-two percent.
Yeah, I don't wanna say double, but it's a, it's a substantial portion of space. Okay.
And, and I actually conferred with the owner and said, look, this would really help our case if we're showing that we're improving the landscaping in the front. Cause we can't really reduce the, the existing, uh, driveway. There's a retaining wall there.
Yeah.
There's a tr- there's a city, city pri- private tree right on the property line.
Yeah, the walkway is almost, you, you question why the wa- it's almost, it's, it's rare that you kinda see that, uh, pathway there to that extent of hardscaping. So, um, I'm glad to see that that's, uh, been, uh, changed. Uh, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions. Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the constraints you're working with, with the existing building. Um, but it's worth it. It's a lovely street. Um, I understand that, that the basement is now considered the first floor because of raising things up. The, the difficulty that that poses for me is that you're asking for a substantially, substantial increase in the deck.
No, we're not. It's exists, existing.
It's what, sorry?
It's the, it's existing depth of building. The building is not becoming any longer. The building previous was measured to the front wall of the garage. It is now still measured to the, the rear wall of the house.
I'm referring to variance number seven, where you said that the, where the bylaw requires that there be a four percent, a four-meter square limit on the platform at the back and you're
Which is the deck?
Yeah.
Existing deck.
No, I didn't say existing deck.
Oh, I, I'm just, it's a clarifying point. It's not existing. So there's a proposed deck
Yeah.
at the rear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of twenty-five point two threes.
Yes.
Okay, so you are requesting a larger deck.
We're, we're asking for, we're being asked to, to ask for a larger deck because they're deeming the basement to be the first floor. In reality, this, that is the first, first floor. If we were not having the basement considered first floor, it wouldn't be a variance.
I'm just going with the wording that we have based on. So there's a larger deck, um, based on that variance. And because of what you've had to do at the front of the building, the deck's elevated. It's elevated substantially.
No. It's not elevated. It's at the, the s- same level as the first floor.
It's elevated from grade. It's elevated almost.
Is it, how far is it off of the ground, the deck? Are there stairs?
Excuse me, why, just go to there?
Yeah, yeah, it's, if the house had stayed exactly the same.
It isn't. Let's talk about, let's talk about what you, that's what you're proposing to build. That deck is a long way up from grade.
Yes, because that's where the grade is.
I don't care why. It's, is a long way up from grade. The issue that I wanted to ask you about was whether you've had a discussion with neighbors on either side about privacy. I noticed on the one side, I think the west side, the, the view from that deck to the west neighbor is blocked somewhat by their building and they also have a deck.
Yeah.
I don't know whether that deck has screening and maybe you
We, we have discussed it with, the owner ha- son has discussed it with the neighbor. If, if the committee so deemed that they wanted to have a, uh, privacy wall, we'd be fine with that.
What does, what does the neighbor want?
No, no objections.
So he didn't?
No.
Okay, and abo- and on the other side as well?
No objections.
The neighbors are fine?
Yeah, there's nobody on record. The, the planning has no dis- issues with the property.
All I wanted to know is whether the people on other side had concerns about that.
They've.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Okay, uh, staff, we have another, uh, we have someone online for this?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we contacted Julian Rocco, the neighbor on the file, but we couldn't reach them.
Okay.
And they're not here.
Sorry, Julian who? He's Julian Rocco.
Another Julian. Oh, so.
Oh.
His phone's turned off. That's why you couldn't get hold of him.
That clarifies it.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you wanna say anything?
All right. We have any, uh, we don't have any other questions? We can take this into committee? All right. Thank you, sir. You can, uh, sit down. We'll take this into, uh, I'll take this into committee now. Anyone wanna get us started?
I can, uh, get us moving there, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bartolo.
Um, in assessing this one, I understand the challenges of the large-scale renovation and the existing site with the, the driveway and the retaining wall a- and whatnot. Um, I think the, the mitigating factors on some of this are the fact that they are essentially building on top of the existing footprint and going straight up and there's no increases in length or depth, which is an important factor for me. And in keeping with that, so essentially the footprint is by and large the same, uh, with some exterior improvements to landscape areas. So I think all in all, from what's there today to what's going to be there tomorrow if everything were, uh, approved, they've made some, uh, exterior and landscape improvements that are kind of, um, in keeping with the intent of the bylaw inserting, heading towards compliance, knowing that they're not gonna get there. They're not there with the existing condition and given the site conditions, like, they're, they're just not going to get there. So I think they've done, uh, you know, some thoughtful design when it comes to that. And all in all, I don't have any issues with this. Um, I, I think it's supportable and I think it's in keeping with, with what's happening in the neighborhood and other recent uh, large-scale renovations, so.
Yep. I'm, I'm glad to see the, uh, that hardscaping, that hardscaping walkway on the side, uh, removed. I think where there's deficiencies and challenges on sites as a committee, we often look, uh, you know, to see if, you know, really all considerations were given. And I think in this case, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see that the applicant was proactive in identifying where improvements could be made. Um, do help, uh, with the other variances. So I'm, I'm also in support, uh, perhaps a motion if there's no other comment?
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Through you, I will put forward to approve this application, uh, without condition.
Right, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. You have your approval.
Thank you very much.
All right, item fourteen, eighty-five Charles Wood Drive. The purpose of the application is to propose a two-story rear and side addition and interior alteration. Two variances before us, lot coverage and west side setback. On file material from the applicant, signature form, letter in support, one letter of objection, uh, from the immediate neighbor at, uh, eighty-seven Charles Wood Drive. Our agent, we're applicant with us.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just hold on, uh, ma'am, you are here in opposition?
Opposition.
All right, okay. We're gonna get started with the agent. We've got our agent online. Uh, ask if you can just start by identifying, uh, by telling us your name and address, sir? And then I'll ask for a, a brief presentation. We'll get the five minutes up on the screen for you.
Okay, uh, hi there. So I'm, uh, Ramon Sanpu and, uh, I'm from, uh, four, six, six, five, Tenda Street West, Etobicoke.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, last great presentation from you?
Sure. Okay, uh, so, uh, this is an existing old bungalow, uh, one and a half story. Uh, as for the site plan, we are, uh, proposing a rear extension and a side extension. Uh, we have, uh, gone with the, done a lot of conversation with the zoning examiner. We have reduced our variances to only two. We also took the house at eighty-three, uh, Charles Wood, which has been already built. Uh, that's at the precedent, so we kinda just followed what they did. Uh, we were ma- very modest in all of our proposal. Uh, just have two variances to the total lot coverage. Uh, again, the size, the depth is almost similar to eighty-three Charles Wood and the second one is the sides.
All right.
We are only at one point two. Sorry.
Sorry, I, I just missed the last part there. Uh, could you just repeat that?
So, uh, yeah, so I was explaining this, uh, I only, we only have two variances.
Right.
One is the lot coverage. Instead of thirty percent, we are at thirty-three point seven percent. And the second one is the side setback. We are at one point two. Uh, the, uh, the bylaws says one point eight meters, uh, but we are, it's u- But we are, it's usual to have four feet because that's where you can neighbor which we are trying to mimic did the same thing. So we are just here with one point two meter setback. Other than that, we don't have any other variances. And we have the support from the neighbors.
All right, thank you very much. Questions?
No problem.
All right. All right, no questions right now. Ma'am, I will ask you to come down now to the podium and tell us your name and address.
My name is Irma De La Cruz. I live at eighty-seven Charles Wood. I'm directly affected by this proposal. Because, you know, this is, you know, going to humongous variables that doesn't respect by law, that is three point thirty percent. This gentleman, this person wants outline thirty-three point seven percent that is going to affect the light, the privacy, and also, you know, the sunlight and our lifestyle as seniors, residents who are living for so many years over there peacefully and working-class people. And second variable is, you know, is going to be very close to our world, the west side. That means they're going to put one point two, which, you know, by law requires one point eight meters. That, you know, I really oppose this proposal. Being a resident, these investors, they come and gonna, you know, be invade our privacy, our tranquility during, you know, construction time. It's not going to be possible for us. It's going to be like, you know, so narrow. It's going to affect our west side of our worlds and our family lives, privacy, the, you know, the dust, sunlight. On the other hand, I really would appreciate the committee to support us. We, I think that we don't ask too much. Just we are, we, I want they can follow the city rules and build with all of them as a citizen equity and respectful manner. We are no opposing that they can have build bigger houses. Like he mentioned, our next neighbor, eighty-three Charles Wood, they already did it. They didn't have moderation, but this builder, they want, you know, three, almost four meter, four meters back in the backyard. They invaded our garden, our backyard, our plants. I don't think so that this proposal would require by law. Again, we are only simply asking to for fairness and follow the city rules and build within them. Because our, you know, neighbors, you know, our house is going to be like a little dot there in a humongous construction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions right now?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kibu.
So you, Mr. Chair, I would like to find out, ma'am, when you said they did not treat you fairly, what do you, what do you mean by that? Were you able to speak with the applicants? Were you able to speak with their agent? And what came out of that discussion if at all it took place?
I, they never even contacted us. I'm a neighborhood, a neighbor, they have on the side a door. Say it again, your question, I couldn't understand.
So I said, you said you want, just you are asking them to treat you fairly.
Fairness.
Yeah, you're asking for fair, yes. My question is, were you able to speak with the applicants or their agent to express your concerns? And what was the result of that or those discussions?
I mean, with that, you know, for sure, the city Toronto has a planning by law rules. I want they can respect the rule, right? One, like in the backyard, three point thirty meters. Okay, by law, right? That's the law. That's fairness and equity. And you know, my my right, I want, you know, that they can put in consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to confirm, so before you step down, we've we've got two variances before us. And I'm I'm just looking at the the west side yard setback. Just to confirm, you are east of the subject property, right? At number eighty-seven?
West, I meant eighty-seven. They are eighty-five.
I see, okay. I just want to, I'm I'm trying to determine, you know, potential impact as a result of the variances on the immediate neighbor. I see the west, there's a west side yard setback variance. I I just wanted to confirm what your relationship to the subject property was. You're the immediate west neighbor. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Okay, let's turn it back to our agent.
Hi.
Hi. So just, I want to provide the opportunity to respond to the concerns that were raised by your immediate neighbor.
Sure. So two things. One is when the owner for this property was out trying to contact the neighbors and feedback, he knocked their door as well. They tried to get in contact with them. No one came out, so that's why there was no discussion. I mean, as per the lack of support, we went around, we tried to talk with as many neighbors as we can, and everyone was very supportive of the improvements that this new house will make in the neighborhood. The second thing is fairly common to have four feet setback because if you see the house in the front, they have four feet setback, the house right across is four feet setback. And additionally, regarding the property at number eighty-seven, their setback is one point two meters. It is clearly visible in the site plan that we provided. So almost all the newer houses or major renovations in the front as well, they have four feet setback. The neighbor has four feet setback with the property line that adjoins us. We are just asking for similar. We are not asking for anything extraordinary at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All right, thank you to everybody that submitted on this file. Let's take this into committee now.
I can start the conversation if you like there, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Bartolo.
Well, I I appreciate the concerns of the neighbor. And I understand what she's talking about. When I look at the application overall, and I look at what's happening in the neighborhood, and I look at where the kind of the houses are aligned, there's a fairly consistent pattern of of new development there. And there is no, there's no request for additional length or depth. So the 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 size of the wall that is adjacent to number eighty-seven is not really a problem. There's nothing we can do about that. And there is no height variance here either. So from an impact point of view, you know, there's almost nothing we can do to to mitigate that because they're not asking for anything that's outside of the bylaw.
Yep.
And then when I look at the thirty-three, the three point seven percent difference that they're asking for, I'll note that it's not really triggering any other landscape variances or setback variances. They're essentially maximizing the envelope that they can build within. And in principle, I don't have a problem with it because I don't think it's causing any more impact than what an as-of-right construction would cause there, so.
Yeah, it's pretty close to what an as-of-right.
It's pretty close, and it's pretty consistent with the other new builds, new development in the area, so I can get behind it.
Just to assage a neighbor's concerns, you know, I would say the impact on number eighty-seven is less than it is on the newer-built home at eighty-three. And that's just by way of a slight jog of the rear main wall. It steps in slightly, one point six meters to be exact, as per the survey. Also, the proposed deck, which is elevated, I do see a number of steps, one point five meters, is again situated closer towards eighty-three, whereas on eighty-seven, while you do have an entrance, it is all below grade, so you're probably not going to see much of the impact beyond the rear main wall, which is stepped in. So I I'm glad to see there is, they they have been responsive, at least in the immediate context, in in addressing what's on both sides, both both sides of the fence. Ma'am, I I can't have any interjections at this point. Mr. Kniffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I agree with what both of you have have said. I I don't see that this has any measurable negative impact on the properties on either side. And I don't, I don't see a problem with the application. I will note that the setback of one point two, which is requested only, applies to one little corner of the building. And much of the rest of the wall is set back and it jogs in and out. And the setback is at least the same as the adjacent owner, and in most cases, it's it's more. And the extension is again set back that distance from the property line. I frankly do not have any trouble with the application. I don't think it's creating a negative impact on the adjacent neighbors.
Given some of the things that were brought up, perhaps it may be good to include or tie the site plan drawing to the side yard and possibly even the lot coverage, just to ensure that some of those step backs, specifically in relationship to the neighbor at eighty-seven, just that they're they're maintained. And they're not, they don't take any additional liberties with that step back because to your point, you know, they could go seventeen-meter building depth, that rear main wall with that one point two meters could actually go back another meter. So and it would it would increase, yeah, you're right. So I I would be also comfortable supporting the variances, but I would ask that it be tied to the, both of the variances be tied substantially in accordance with the site plan if that's not of any concern. Yeah, perhaps a motion?
I'd I'd move approval of the application subject to the variances that are requested being tied to be substant, be constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan that is before us and was received April the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
All right, we have a seconder, seconded by Mr. Kibu. All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. That application is approved with condition. Okay, our last item of the two P M. Time slot, number fifteen. Item fifteen, the property address, two Bayberry Crescent. The purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story residential dwelling. We have eight variances before us, front and rear main wall height in relation to prescribed setbacks, driveway width, building length, building depth, lot coverage, front yard landscaping, front yard soft landscaping, and rear second-floor balcony area. On file, material from the applicant, report from community planning, and a memo from transportation. Okay, we have our agent with us.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Before we get started, just to confirm your name and address for us.
Absolutely. Peter Giordano, David Small Designs, fourteen oh five Cornwall Road in Oakville. We're the authorized agents and the project designer.
All right. I should ask, is anybody here in the gallery to speak to this item? And staff, do we have our neighbor online?
We contacted, through you, Mr. Chair, we contacted Linda Lee, but we are not able to find him.
All right. All right, I'll ask my colleagues whether or not they would like a full presentation on this.
Could the applicant go over the changes through?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kniffel. Thank you for catching that. All right, let's go back to our agent. As per my colleague's request, let's pull up the public notice. Are there any modifications being made today?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, there is, there are. Can I ask the moderator to display my presentation slides? I have them all summarized. It would be page three of my presentation. Just one more page. There we go. Okay, and I I can just quickly summarize those. So we we work with the with the city planner to to achieve items that he was hoping we could make some adjustments to. We followed through with all of those. So if I start from the top, I'll go to item number two, the detached house driveway width. So we modified the driveway configuration. We narrowed it from nine point seven seven to nine point one eight meters. But I will note that the width of nine point one eight eight meters represents only about the last fifth of the driveway run. Four fifths of that are in compliance and even less at five point one three meters in width. Now by, we we also changed the overall shape of the driveway. And by modifying that, we increased the soft landscape area, decreased the hard landscaped area. Therefore, items number six and item number seven are no longer required. They now both conform. So we can take those two items off the list. And then for building depth, we've reduced the building depth a small amount, but it was what we were requested to do by the planner, twenty-four point zero seven. We've reduced it to twenty-three point nine nine by shifting the house forward, modifying the rear porch slightly. They ask, planning staff asked us to be just below the number of twenty-four. But I will mention that, maybe if you could advance just two more, one more slide? Okay, perfect. So that one slide there shows that because of the tapering at the front of the property and at the side flange part of the property, the measuring line that measures building length is actually a diagonal dimension. It's it's the offset from the front property line. You see the diagonal at the front. And then that diagonal is offset to the back. That's a diagonal dimension that kind of exaggerates the overall length. Talking to the planner there, we're quite comfortable with our revision. You'll see I have a linear dimension in there where the actual building depth is more like, I can't read that number, but I believe it's nineteen point three eight meters. That that's more in keeping with the actual physical length of our building. So that was something that the the planner was comfortable book with. By making those adjustments, it also modified item number eight. So item number eight previously asked for ten point zero six square meters. That's been reduced to nine point nine six square meters.
Sorry, and that that was variance number?
Number eight.
Could you just confirm the amount? The number is nine point?
Nine six.
Nine point nine six. Okay, thank you. That's what I thought I heard.
And again, I will say that the planner didn't have any concerns with that variance item either.
All right. Questions? All right, questions? Just uh, just reviewing some of the changes, just to uh, compare them to what I'm looking at in the staff report, uh, and just ensure that everything is uh, in line. With the recommendations of staff, uh, and that there's no perhaps, no deviation that we need to address.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I've checked those numbers and and they all, all of our numbers that we're proposing. If if this is the uh, um, decision of the committee, we're, we're, we're matching those numbers and we're fine with those numbers.
Okay. All right, very well. Members, we uh, prepared to take this into committee or, uh, some further questions? None? Okay, uh, thank you to our agent. Uh, we'll uh, take this into uh, committee now. Um, I should ask, um. I do notice, uh, we do have that report from transportation. Uh, there were some uh, conditions that were requested. I, I don't think we uh, addressed those with the applicant. Um, I might. Take us out of committee just to uh, confirm uh, some of those discussions. All right, uh, well, let's come out of committee now. Uh, I, I wanna go back to the agent. I just wanna, uh. Perhaps staff can just pull up the transportation uh, report dated May twenty-second. Uh, I just wanna ask. Uh, the agent uh, about some of the uh, recommendations that are uh, being asked of transportation.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm aware of those. I've read those and and we're fine with both of those uh, recommended conditions.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll go back into committee now. Open it up for comment or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before, before we actually, excuse me, comment on the actual application. Um, might I extend my compliments to the applicant? This was a really well-presented application. Um, it made our job considerably easier, uh, despite the fact that we're, we're uh, taking some time right now. It's a complicated application. But the manner in which you uh, explained the changes and then your rationale for the changes and the graphics that indicated the implications of the variances on the site. I very much appreciated that. Um, it, it made for reviewing this application much easier, so I just wanted to extend my thank you for that.
Yeah, Mr. Niffel, particular the inclusion of uh, the immediate context really helps to uh, help us cite, uh, or situate this uh, building on the site. It is a bit of an unusual uh, application or unusual property in that it's a corner uh, lot, uh, which uh. Has both frontage, has two frontages uh, on the side of the street. Uh, generally, you know, building depths, uh, it might be a little more challenging if you're within the block. Um, but certainly the context map, uh, that was uh, provided is evidenced, uh. Uh, by the applicant is, is certainly helpful, the, the figure ground context map, um, and just kind of showing the. Uh, relationship of figure to ground, uh, in this particular neighborhood is uh, it, it's a little unique in that sense. Those, those corner lots are afforded a little more uh, length in uh, in comparison to those that are uh, within a, uh, any of the blocks. So it, it helps to, uh, at least from my sense, uh, understand uh, rationale for uh, supporting a increased depth and length. Mr. Kaboo, you, did you have a, I think I saw your hand, no. Uh, yes, Mr. Niffel.
Mr. Chairman, I, excuse me, as revised, I have no difficulty with this application. I think it's um. It's, it's a really well-done proposal. Uh, I think it considers the context in which it's located, and I think the application as revised is uh, supportable. Uh, I would like to make an attempt at um, uh, recommending approval and just hope I don't miss any of these variances. So I'd like to uh, um, move approval of the revised application with variances six and seven deleted. Uh, variances four, four is changed to twenty-three point nine nine, and I believe variance eight was changed. As well, and I'm sorry, I don't have the number for that one. Um, nine point nine six, thank you.
Nine point nine six.
In, in addition to the transportation conditions. And variance two, sorry, pardon me, was changed to nine point one eight. Excuse me. Um, also, subject to the transportation conditions that you mentioned. Um, and I know with uh, with uh, pleasure frankly, that the second floor balcony um, has got screening on one side. I would not recommend that that be a condition because I would like the applicant to have the freedom to provide the kind of screening that he thinks. Why is most impactful for this particular building. So subject to those changes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application.
Uh.
I did.
Yes, yeah, and we did capture amendment to variance four, twenty-three point nine nine. If you captured that, okay.
I did, yes.
Uh, any? And we don't need to tie to any drawings?
I don't think so, no.
Correct.
But I stand to be corrected if I've missed one of the variances. I don't think I did, but.
I think we've captured everything. Um, all right. We've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Niffel, that's second by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. That motion carries. The application is approved. All right, the time is now.
Thank you for your kind words. Have a great day.
Yes, you as well. All right, the time is now ten after four. Uh, I'd like to offer a ten-minute relief break to staff and committee. Uh, we can re- resume our four P M. uh, session at four twenty.
All right, we're back. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Ah, all right. All right, we're back. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We are on item number sixteen, forty-nine Addison Crescent. The purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story duplex dwelling with integrated garage. We've got a number of variances: front platform height, front canopy setback from a west-side lot line, east and west-side exterior mainwell heights, east side yard setback, main pedestrian entrance height, front platform encroachment into a front yard setback, front yard setback, front yard soft landscaping, driveway width, front yard stair width, and rear deck encroachment into a rear yard setback. On file material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry, community planning, email from Metrolinks, letters of concern from number forty, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six, and fifty-nine Addison Crescent, as well as seven Canfield Place. Also, I have a late letter on file from councillor Burnside. All right, we've got our agent with us.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm here.
All right, your name and address.
My name is Noshin Mozafari from Hyphen Studio, representing my client, owner of forty-nine Addison Crescent.
Welcome back, Ms. Mozafari. Okay, I believe, in my understanding, this is going to be a modified application. Is that fair to state?
Yes.
All right, let's pull up the public notice. I'm going to ask you to take us through the modifications in order, starting with variance one.
Sure.
To you, Mr. Chair. Can we have few minutes? We are having a problem showing anything.
I'm gonna, let's just send this item down just for one minute. Staff have some technical issues we need to resolve, and we will be right back.
You're good. I think she can start.
Okay.
All right, we're back.
For the modifications. Okay. For the modifications, item number four, the east side yard setback is improved to one point thirty-seven. Item number six, the encroachment of the front porch is improved to three point nine four. Item number eight, for the soft landscaping, the variance is removed. Number ten, the variance for the width of front stairs is removed. And number eleven, variance for the rear deck encroachment is removed.
Number eleven.
The rest remains the same.
All right. Okay, thank you for those modifications. We'll require a presentation. We'll get the five minutes up on the screen, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. For my presentation, yes, if you look at this site plan, we have tried to show all the information with different colors. The dimensions with blue color shows the proposed building, and those red dash lines are the required front setback, rear setback, and side setback on the east side. We are in compliance on the west for the side setback. And the existing building is also shown with purple colors, the footprint, and also the setbacks of the existing building. If, with these modifications, if I go through the requested variances very briefly, we basically have variance number one and five for the height of pedestrian entrance and the porch. We are asking for one point fifty-eight and one point thirty-seven for the height of entrance and the porch. For variance number two, we are asking for the setback of the canopy on the west side. The canopy returns to the side just for four feet to the chimney, and the setback of that little portion is not in compliance. Variance number three, the height of side mainwalls is at seven point ninety-two versus seven point five meter allowed, which is less than half a meter above permitted. Variance number four, we are asking for east side yard setback, one point thirty-seven, which is one and a half foot less than allowed, and this is only for the front portion of the building. And on this site plan, that portion is shown with a yellow color at the front. And at the rear, we have much more than required setback. We have more than doubled the required, more than twelve feet setback at the rear. And if you have the average of these two portions, you could say that the whole building is at two point thirty-two meter setback from the east property line. Variance number six and seven are for the front setback, and consequently, the encroachment of the porch into the front setback. If you can go to the next page of my presentation material, as you see, the established line of the majority of the existing buildings on the street is almost twenty-five feet, which is seven point sixty-two, and the same as what we are proposing. And only our neighbor on the east side steps back more than usual. And what we are doing is keeping the existing front setback, which is aligned with most of the other homes on the street, and consequently, the encroachment of the porch is measured from that dash line for the required front setback, and it shows like this exaggerated number. The actual porch is one point sixty-eight meter, the size of the porch, but since, if you look back to that site plan, since it's measured from that dashed red line, the variance shows at three point nine four. Last one is for the width of driveway, which is seven point seventy-seven. And if you consider the site plan, the driveway is much narrower at the front. For the care path, it's only five point forty-nine, and it widens up when it's closer to the building to have access to the garage. And we have removed all the variances for the front landscaping and soft landscaping area. So the, only the width of driveway without causing any variances for the landscaping is a deficiency. We had some back and forth with the planner of the case and made these revisions and improvements, and he is in support of the application, since it's in keeping with the other approved cases in the neighborhood, and with the general conditions of the site. I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, we have some other speakers. Is anybody here to speak to this item? No. Oh, there are three. Okay. Who would like to speak first?
I see, there's a note here. So I've pressed the button. Do I just leave it now?
You're good, yeah. Before you get started, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Christine Mann. I live at fourteen Canfield Place. I have lived there for twenty-four years. There are many important issues being considered here today. I want to highlight one in particular that you'll find is common to the neighborhood and we have direct experience with. The lots on Canfield Place back on to those on Addison Crescent. A new home at forty-five Addison Crescent, two doors down from forty-nine, was completed last year. This lot backs on to our yard, and so we have recent experience with construction immediately behind us. And the reason why I'm bringing it forward is because I believe you'll see that issues are very similar. This problem is common in our neighborhood, and one of the ways that this particular building is having a lasting impact on our own lot is that the construction resulted in reduced green space and the removal of a considerable number of mature trees. Since the construction, we have consistently experienced flooding in our yard after it rains. The flooding occurs along the full length of the property line that we share. Just this last week, standing water extended over six meters into our yard. This has already caused considerable damage to our landscaping. On a personal level, this is frustrating, and it has been very expensive. It's requiring an investment of thousands of dollars in new plantings that we hope will be able to tolerate the new conditions. Taking a broader view, I have learned from talking to others in the neighborhood that water damage to homes and properties adjacent to these construction problems or construction projects is common in our area. Neighbors on our street have also had to deal with water problems, which include rainfall flowing into their properties, flooded basements, and drainage from sump pumps that the new homes end up needing. Taking a broader perspective, we have observed that the new construction projects routinely request variances to increase lot coverage, decrease green spaces, and remove well-established trees. This trend has a cumulative and detrimental effect on the overall health and well-being of our city as it impacts air quality and stresses the infrastructure. I am confident that our neighbor on Addison did not intend to cause problems for us. Just as I am sure that no one's intention is to negatively impact the city. But that is why we rely on the Planning Act and this committee to protect the wider community. We urge the committee to uphold We urge the committee to uphold the zoning bylaws and recognize the effect that these repeated requests for variances have on neighboring properties. Um, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, can I just confirm, uh, which number are you on the court directly behind?
Yes, number 14.
Okay, and you're, uh, I can see, uh, the adjacency there, just so I can understand the impact to you specifically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did bring an image if you'd like to see.
Uh, as much as I would, I, I, unfortunately, I can't just out of procedural fairness. But, um, I, I think I've got a good grasp of the, uh, the immediate area so far.
Okay.
Okay, um, questions? Alright, thank you, uh, you can sit down.
Thank you.
We'll have a, another, uh, person up? Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, just your name and address?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, my name, uh, my name is, uh, Paul Graham, uh, although on the, um, uh, it's William John Paul Graham, uh, but I go by Paul, uh, 51 Addisons, so I'm, uh, on the east side of the, uh, proposed, uh, build.
The immediate neighbor, one of the immediate neighbors?
I am one of the immediate neighbors, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
In addition to Miss Mann at the rear?
In addition to Miss Mann.
Okay, understood.
Okay. Uh, first, I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, a lot of the concerns, uh, we have are, um, concerns that my neighbors have as well. Uh, for us specifically, uh, I think if you, uh, you might have noticed, our house is already set back significantly at 12.09 meters. The proposed, uh, front yard setback on this build is 7.62 meters, which is 15, almost 15 feet, and that's quite substantial. Um, the other concern we had was the side yard setback, but if I heard correctly, they've adjusted that to 1.77, is that correct?
We'll get that clarification.
Okay, yeah, 'cause right, all I have on my notes is, uh, it went from 1.22 to 1.37, I believe.
That's, uh, number four, yes.
It's, yeah, it, it's 1.37 or?
1.37, uh, meters is what I, I heard.
Alright, so that is, uh, that is another issue. And the iss- issue for us is, um, you know, for us, it's the overall concern about the front yard and the side setback, uh, is, is, is real and it's especially real for us, uh, based on what I shared with you on our already substantially further setback. Uh, it's, and it is unique. Uh, we are basically, I submitted some pictures which showed our front deck that we built. We recently rebuilt our house, uh, a couple of years ago. And, uh, we're just now going to be facing this massive, um, wall, uh, next to our front yard porch. It will eliminate sunshine in the summertime for sure, uh, resulting in for us, um, you know, have a, quite a negative impact. Okay, um, the other point, uh, point is the si- side yard setback, um, proposed is 1.37 meters. Uh, on the other side, uh, for, uh, number 47, I believe it's 1.8 meters. So, not sure why it's encroaching further on us, uh, than compared to our neighbors. Um, I'd like to, um, point out a couple of other things. Um, the, you know, the majority of the houses, it was pointed out, are, you know, sort of set back around 7.6, 7.7. Those are bungalows, okay? The, the two other houses that are two stories on our side of the street are set back nine meters and nine and a half meters respectively. Um, which is a little bit more conducive to the, you know, this, um, the neighborhood, uh, for lack of a better word, I guess. Uh, so it's really, it's the si- the bungalows that have the smaller side yard setbacks. And that doesn't, doesn't encroach on people's properties, um, at all. Um, yeah, one other thing is the three-car garage, that's unprecedented. There's no precedence on our street for a three-car garage, um, it's, um, for that. And then the other, the biggest issue, uh, as well, it really is the, um, the drainage concerns. Uh, I can attest, uh, it is, it is a wet neighborhood. Uh, I have a sump pump, I have a backflow, I've done everything. And in, you know, at the peak of the season, it will go off about every five minutes. So with the lot coverage being 30, proposed lot coverage being 36%, uh, you know, ours is 25%, um, uh, we have huge concerns about, uh, water, uh, issues. It already is a huge, um, a high water table, uh, in the neighborhood, so. And that is all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Any questions or?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, hey, questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Of course. Um, actually, uh, I have a question for you, if you don't mind, apologize. Uh, in your submission, you noted there were two newer homes on the same side of the street.
Yeah.
Uh, with, uh, but they were, uh, they provided a little bit more setback than, uh, what some of the other properties have at 7 and change, but you're saying these around 9. Uh, do you, uh, do you have, know which, uh, numbers, uh, those are specifically?
Yeah, um, I believe it was submitted, um, 'cause they pulled it off on the Committee of Adjustment, um, file, uh, off online. And so.
Yeah, sorry, I heard. I heard 45 and 59.
Oh, sorry, you, oh, you wanted the addresses.
Yeah.
45, uh, 49, 51, 53, 50, I think it's 45 and 57. 57.
Uh.
Yeah.
We'll clarify that, I just wanna.
I, I'm, I'm almost certain it's 45 and 57.
45 and 57, okay. Yeah, because, um, I, I see 57 on the applicants, uh, some of the applicants' planning rationale diagrams. I just want to understand the, uh, what's going on with respect to the, uh, that datum line on the street, that invisible datum line of where that front main wall really should land.
Yeah, absolutely, and, 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 you know, the, um, you know, and that's why I wanted to point that out, is those are newer builds. Yeah, I mean, you know, added a second story, they respected the front yard setback that is very common in the neighborhood. Uh, that's something we did, I mean, we could have come out further, but we didn't, we.
Yeah, fair enough.
Respected that, so.
Okay.
So that's.
Thank you for that point of clarification, yeah, I see actually them both 45 and 57.
Yeah.
Uh, on there, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to hear, we have another neighbor, uh, coming down to speak, uh, please come down to the mic. Welcome.
Welcome, or well. Anyway, um, my name's Peter Bride, uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, I live and have owned 47 Addison for 35 years. I've lived in the immediate area for 61 years. Um, I'm fairly uniquely qualified to discuss this because I'm a landscape architect. I have been a member of the OALA for 40 years. And a, a large part of what I do is evaluating floor plans and assessing coverage of lots and so forth. So, and I happen to have been a pretty good friend of Macklin Hancock, who designed Don Mills in the first place. So, um, having said all of that, um, the proposal for 36% coverage now, I think they peeled it back a bit. What is the actual percentage coverage now? Has, has the architect submitted that statistic?
Uh, I can ask, I don't, I don't have the number before me, uh, but I, we, we can ask that, yeah.
Okay, but it, having, let's just say that it's still 36%. And, um, the concrete deck on the back of the house is 12 by roughly 38 or so. But anyway, I, I did a calculation of it and it adds another 400 square feet to the coverage of the footprint of the lot. Um, so if you, you know, do the math then, and add those things together, you have lot coverage of hard, you know, dwelling and hard surface, quite apart from the driveway of about 50%.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm gonna interject, and I'm just watching the clock, I don't want to take away from your time. Uh, I, my understanding, on the public notice, we don't have any variance for lot coverage.
Well, there has to be because they're calling for 36% and the zoning co- is 25.
Right.
And, and.
They're not applying for it though, right? So they, if they've missed that variance, it's not before us, and let's say they get a decision.
A lot of things on these drawings.
Yeah.
To draw those things to your attention, because scrutinizing drawings is a big part of what I do.
Yeah, fair enough.
Um, so, the front yard setback, they're going to build the house, uh, the house itself is going to be at the same setback as the front of my house, fine, I have no problem with that. But what they are proposing over and above that is a very elaborate and egregiously complicated set of steps and, uh, poured-in-place, uh, concrete form planters and a lot of, you know, just superfluous stuff that, um, the, the, the composition is absolutely out of key with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, I'm a big fan of good architecture and I'm a big fan of good design generally. And I'd be willing to sit still for 36% coverage if this was going to be an architectural marvel. But it's not, far from it. And there are a, a number of things about scrutinizing the plans, like for example, I'll just give you a quick summary. If you look at the floor plan of the house, which, um, you have to walk through a walk-in closet to get to the powder room. Interesting, I've never seen that one before, but that's, you know, uh, curious. Secondly, there's a mechanical room that is referred to in a little footprint detail drawing. Um, and, but there is no, um, indication of where on the footprint of the basement that this mechanical room is going to be. But if you look at the, um, we- west elevation, you'll see at the bottom in the labeling, in a sub-basement level, it says mechanical room 97.6. Well, where are the walls, where are the footings, where, there's no detail whatsoever. So you're going to be putting, uh, a, a hole, or the mechanical for presumably the, the entire house, which does not show on the basement floor plan, below the basement floor somewhere, I don't know where. Um, some, some geranium location. And, like, the water table is really high. And where is all of this water going to be managed and discharged to? Secondly, there is a catch basin on the property. There's a bell easement that goes down the back of the properties. And, um, there's a catch basin that is in the southwest, southeast, pardon me, uh, southwest corner of the garden. No, that doesn't show on the survey. And has anybody assessed whether it is active or connected to anything? I don't think so. Um, and so is that going to be part of the water management or is that just a non-starter? Who knows?
Yeah.
They don't know, they, they really don't. And the owner has owned the property since 2009 and has had it rented out steadily, uh, since then, and has now decided that they are going to build their house.
Fair enough, I just gonna interject, we're just, we are beyond the five minutes, I know I did interject at some point, uh, but we can just, uh, wrap up. Uh, we may have some questions as well, uh, to facilitate some further discussion.
Yeah, you want a different elevation for that, you want the, scroll down. Scroll down. Scroll down, the next one, okay. Look at the bottom label, the bottom right-hand corner, it says mechanical room 97.5 or 96.5, something like that.
I see that, yeah.
Okay.
I've, I've noted that, I'm, I'm gonna ask the agent for some clarification, uh, hopefully we can get, uh, a little bit.
But look, then look at the, at the, at the plan, the floor plan for the basement.
I'm looking at it right now.
It's not, you know, like, hello. So, I mean, it's, all of these red flags on, upon examining it have, you know, got me pretty concerned, um, because I live next door.
Yep, fair enough. Okay, uh, I'm gonna have to end you there. Um, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions at this time, yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, did the applicant contact you for your advice or your opinion on this?
No, and I, I called them, I emailed them, I, I met with the owners. And they pledged to have the architects, uh, get in touch with me, that did not happen.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Alright, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for that submission.
Very good.
Uh, is anybody else here in person to speak to this item? Staff?
Only online. Online, yes.
Alright, I'll turn it over to you guys.
To you, Mr. Chair, we unmuted, re- send a request to unmute to Leslie Ng, and she needs to approve it.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello. We can hear you.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Great, great, yes. So what, what does you need for me to approve?
Your, your name and address to start, and then, uh, it will be, uh, I'll, we'll give you an opportunity, uh, to provide some comment on the application if you like.
Sure, sure, it's, uh, Leslie Ng from 45 Addison Crescent.
Alright, thank you. Two doors over.
Okay, yeah, my, yeah, my, my concern is the, uh, the frontage, the setbacks, and the, uh, 36% footprint. And, you know, it's all been addressed already, but those are my main concerns.
Okay. Questions? Alright, we have other neighbors wish to speak, okay. Alright, uh, thank you to everybody that has spoken on this item, I'd like to turn it back to the agent now. Um, a lo- a lot to respond to, a lot to unpack here. Um, let's, uh, get Ms. Moza Farri back, uh, and, uh, provide her the floor for a response.
Hi, thank you, uh, and thank you for the neighbors for sharing their concerns. Uh, first of all, my client only, uh, shared the contact info of our adjacent neighbor at 51 Addison. Uh, all, uh, that, uh, I reached, uh, to him and we had a lengthy discussion about this application. Uh, and I totally understand, uh, his concerns, uh, for the, uh, and I want to focus mostly on he, on his concerns as, uh, he lives, uh, right, uh, on the east side of, uh, our property. Uh, if you kindly can go back to that, uh, site plan, uh, color-coded site plan that I provided, uh, I can explain what's happening here. As I mentioned here, uh, we are keeping the front setback, uh, at the existing location. And I understand that the, uh, existing house is, uh, much smaller, most, uh, more shifted to the, uh, west side. Uh, we are improving the west side setback and we are, uh, providing the required setback on the west because that wall is, uh, a straight wall going all the way to the rear. But on the east side, since it's only for a small portion and the deviation is only, uh, one and a half foot, and we have much more setback at the rear, uh, we are asking for these variants only for front portion of the house. And, uh, the average that we are, uh, leaving is much more than allowed. Uh, only the distribution is different. And if you look at these, uh, uh, properties, the, uh, depth of the lot is only 100 foot. And we are. And we are leaving twenty-five foot, one-fourth of the lot there for the front setback, which is aligned with majority of the neighbors based on that location map that, uh, is on the second page. Uh, and, uh, I understand, uh, that, uh, uh, Mr. Paul, uh, said that, uh, for example, forty-five Addison, uh, has more setback, but that one is an additional renovation application, it's not a brand-new. If we, uh, were, uh, uh, doing a additional renovation, we could, uh, keep the same, uh, existing setback, which is again the same as what we are proposing although it's a, a brand-new application. And I, uh, with my experience, uh, on, uh, so many committee cases, I understand that front setback is not a, a common variance, uh, and we usually avoid to have such a variance. But, uh, on this case with the specific configuration of the homes, even the planner of the case admitted that, uh, since all the, uh, uh, most of the homes are at this established line, uh, some of them are stepping back and keeping, uh, uh, established line, uh, at the twenty-five, uh, feet, uh, setback for the front. For this shallow, considerably shallow lots, uh, is, uh, serves the bigger picture in future, uh, better. Because, uh, later on, let's say, ten, fifteen years from now, if the, uh, someone, uh, wants to develop their property on the east side at fifty-one, they, uh, they, uh, uh, they should bring, uh, the, uh, um, building toward the front and have bigger, uh, rear setback, which is, uh, usually more, uh, desirable, uh, for, uh, people, uh, who want to enjoy their rear yard. And I understand that, uh, in this specific case, uh, the neighbor is, uh, using the front setback more. But we have provided a shadow study on the last page of this supporting material to show, uh, to compare the proposed and, uh, uh, allowed, uh, footprint. If you go to the next page, this one is the proposed, this one is as of right. And we have overlapped those shadow, uh, shadows on the last page. As you see, the blue line is as of right shadow and the proposed is the red one. And in some areas, the front porch of the neighbor located at the east, which is the top of these drawing, drawings, uh, is already completely in shadow, uh, for the whole, uh, room, no matter, uh, what we do here, even for the, even with the as-of-right, uh, footprint. And, uh, if you can, uh, go back to that site plan, uh, we are not, uh, maximizing the allowed building length, which is seventeen meter. The building length that we are proposing is only fourteen meter, fourteen point twelve. And, uh, still, uh, our, uh, rear line is, uh, uh, goes, uh, uh, to the rear, uh, more than the other neighbor at the west side. And, uh, we, we could, uh, it was, uh, very easy and very possible to just shift the, uh, building to the rear, increase the front setback and, uh, reduce the rear setback, which is more than a load. But then, I'm sure that the other neighbor on the west side would, uh, have issues. And also, uh, it wouldn't be, uh, as, uh, good as this proposal for the street escape, for the homes to, to be on the same line in, uh, long-term, uh, future. And, uh, as I mentioned, we don't have any length variance, any depth variance, any rear yard, any, uh, height variance, uh, except that, uh, one and a half foot en- encroachment for the front portion into the, uh, side setback on the east. We are generally in the, uh, allowed, uh, building envelope. I understand that the building is shifted more to the front because of the, uh, limited lot depth and the configuration of all neighboring properties in, in a bigger picture provided on the second page that shows the established line of the, uh, street. And that's why the planner is in full support of the application, which, uh, which, uh, you know, uh, the city's planner usually don't support the front yard, uh, setback variance. Uh, I had that experience before, but on this case, he is in support because he, uh, he, uh, takes a deeper look, uh, at the bigger picture of the neighborhood. And, uh, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much.
Questions? Mr. Niffel?
Mr. Chairman, on the, um, on the site plan that we have before us on the screen, you have a concrete deck at the back and you originally had a variance that you removed because the deck extended into the rear yard. I think it was, uh, excuse me, one second when I find it. Uh, the proposed deck encroached two-point-five-five meters into the rear yard. You removed that variance, what does that do to the site plan that's in front of us?
Uh, the permitted encroachment for the deck to the rear, uh, to the required rear setback is two-point-five meter and the variance was two-point-five-five, so it was like two inches more than a load. So, we removed that variance, uh, we, uh, didn't have a chance to remove it, uh, when we were, uh, during the, the zoning review process because, uh, we wanted to move forward, uh, faster. But it was like two inches, uh, and if you see, uh, the dimension, uh, from the, the, uh, encroachment of the rear deck is measured from that red dash line that shows the required rear setback. And that's, uh, encroachment is now in compliance, less than two-point-five meter.
So, what you're saying is that the site plan before us would basically, the only thing that would change would be the south line of the deck would move a few inches?
Yes.
And the second question I have is the deck is concrete and is Mr., I want to get his name right, Mr. Bride, I thought rather convincingly, um, talked about the footprint of the building, including the deck because there's been a lot of concern about drainage and water runoff and, and percolation and so forth. Is there any reason why that has to be concrete? Could it not be some material that would allow for percolational water? There's nothing underneath it, it's just, it's poured on a foundation, right?
No, there is nothing under, under, there is nothing underneath and it's, uh, unexcavated area underneath. Uh, that was just, uh, the preference of my client. Uh, he wanted to have, uh, like, a stone and concrete on top of the deck rather than wood, uh, because, uh, the wood deck usually requires more maintenance and, uh, hmm, that's why.
But the larger issue here is one, is one of, the, the larger issue here has been expressed by all of the neighbors that have spoken is drainage, so in that, in that, uh, respect, would you be, um, open to changing the material of that deck?
To wood deck?
To something-
Uh, I, I have no issue with that, uh, I can, uh, I have no issue, uh, with that. But, uh, based on my understanding, the zoning bylaw doesn't govern the material and the finishing of the deck. It, uh, just talks about the deck as a platform.
That's correct.
And, uh, the rear deck, uh, it's set, but it has a massive setback on both sides, more than, uh, twelve feet on each side. The height of the deck is not that much, uh, not of, uh, zoning requirements for the rear deck.
So, is your answer that you would or would not consider changing the material?
Uh, to be honest, it's not my, uh, uh, it's not my place to, uh, answer that because, uh, I'm, I'm the architect, that, uh, I should ask my client as the owner and, uh, who, who wants to live in his, in this, uh, house. But, uh, I would, uh, I don't think, uh, he would, uh, have, uh, major concerns with that. Uh, it was just, uh, his preference.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Bertolo?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the applicant. What is the lot coverage?
The lot coverage is, uh, thirty-five percent.
Okay.
I believe.
I have two different sets of drawings here, one says thirty-six, one says thirty-five decimal seven. And there's some slight changes to all, or not all, but a lot of the numbers between the public notice set and then the set that was received May sixteenth. They're not, not very large changes, but they are different.
Yes, uh, since we improved the side setback from, uh, one-point-two-two to one-point-thirty-seven, it changed the lot coverage, it impacted the, uh, uh, calculation of the lot coverage a little bit. And, uh, the rest, the numbers are, that are different is for the yard analysis, for the landscaping, uh, calculations, which we removed the variance. Those are the numbers that are changed, the rest, I believe, uh, are the same. And also the side setback for the east, uh, on the zoning, on the original, uh, application, it was one-point-two-two meter and now it's changed to one-point-three-seven. So, with these, uh, little modifications on different variances to remove them or improve them, uh, some of these numbers are, uh, changed, uh, a bit here and there.
So, the set that was received by, uh, the city on May sixteenth incorporates the changes that-
That's the part-
-the planner had proposed, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. And what is the maximum permitted lot coverage in this area?
Uh, for this, uh, application, the maximum, uh, allowed lot coverage is forty-five percent. And also the length is-
Hold on, excuse me, I, I can't have people interject. I, I understand we're asking for clarification on zoning. We take it with a grain of salt. We understand that this is an agent providing, uh, information. We don't have a zoning examiner, uh, we're just trying to get some more information. But, please, uh, please avoid, uh, callouts.
And, um, and then finally-
The, the plans were, uh, were examined by a zoning examiner and the variances are determined very precisely. Uh, the, uh, allowed lot coverage for this, uh, proposal is, uh, forty-five percent. And also the allowed length is, uh, seventeen meter as long as, uh, we don't have any rear or front setback. Uh, so, uh, we are, as I mentioned, we are basically between the allowed, uh, building envelope regardless of that one foot, one and a half foot on the east side, only for the front portion. And considering the massive setback at the rear, if you get the average, it's like two-point-three meter setback for the whole building if, uh, you were, uh, to have a perfect rectangular.
That, that's fine, I, I understand, that's, that's not necessarily pertinent to the question I'm asking. And then finally, I, I'm trying to understand, I don't think this is going to make a difference, but I do want to make sure. I'm trying to understand your proposed mechanical room and the grade that it's at. Now, where is that located in plan view and does it add to the length of the house underground or is it below another level?
No, uh, it, it, it doesn't add to the length, uh, my staff only has showed, uh, it's on the site because it's a small room. Uh, the location of the mechanical room is under the mudroom. Uh, you see there is another set of stairs, uh, and, and it says down. So, the mechanical room goes under the mudroom. Uh, and the reason is that for the walkout, we already have to excavate, uh, more to have, uh, freezing protection for the foundation walls.
That's, that's fine, I just wanted to understand where it was and it, it's okay where it is, it's, uh,
No, it's not a separate building, it doesn't add to the building length, uh, it's, it's under it.
That's fine.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, that, uh, answers all my questions, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, uh, we have spent a lot of time on this, I want to thank everybody for their submissions. I am now going to take this file into committee for a brief discussion, hopefully a little bit of, uh, planning rationale, uh, followed by, uh, a motion. Anybody want to get us started? Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Just, just a couple of comments to start off. Um, I have real problems with the proposal for a three-car garage in this location. I'm, I'm very, um, impressed by the presentations by the neighbors and the issues of water and drainage and flooding and so forth. Um, it seems to me that that being the state, uh, of, of this particular area, uh, that's information that the designer and the applicant and the owner are aware of. And in that case, a three-car garage with a, an expanded width driveway leading to it only exacerbates what I understand to be a pretty difficult situation with drainage. So, I have trouble with the three-car garage, but the variance that's associated with that, um, that I would not support is, is adding or providing, uh, greater width to the driveway. I also, in, in this, I hadn't thought of this frankly until, uh, Mr. Bride gave his presentation. And I thought it was a clever way of looking at this from the perspective of water. Uh, he was talking about the footprint of the house and the footprint of the deck. And regardless of what we call them and how we, uh, accurately, he, he added those together and said, "Those are areas where water can't go through, quite rightly so." That being said, I have real concerns with the deck at the back unnecessarily being a concrete deck that actually doesn't absorb water at all. There's no reason for it being concrete other than, as I gather, the owner wanted to have flagstone on it. But in the larger issue of water drainage and exposure and so forth, I think a concrete deck is absolutely the wrong thing to be doing here, so. And there were a number of other areas that various people have pointed out which are, uh, incomplete or, or don't make sense in the drawing. So, I frankly don't have confidence that this is a, a good application, but those two concerns stand out to me right now.
Uh, provided, just a, a few comments. Um, I, I also have some concern, I, I was kind of flagged a little bit more by the, uh, the number of variances related specifically to the front structure that sits in front of the house. Um, so, we're looking at the first variance, uh, for the front platform height. We're looking at the second for the canopy, uh, setback, uh, related to that platform. We're looking at number five, uh, for the main pedestrian entrance height. We're looking at number six for the platform encroachment. All of these variances, and then all of those impact obviously, uh, are exacerbated by the fact that there is a request for a front yard setback variance, which I will say I, I don't have an issue with. Um, I disagree with the counselor, uh, concern. I, I do recognize that the immediate neighbor is set much further back. But I, I do take the applicant's submission that, 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 the, kind of the correct atom line for where, uh, this is an area in transition, right? And there has to be some acknowledgement that, uh, over time, uh, the, there will be some infill. Um, that said, uh, being supportive of the front yard setback, I just, I don't think, if you're, if you're pushing all the way to seven-point-six to, to exacerbate that with the size of struc- stair structure, uh, in the front yard, um, in order to get up to that first floor level, I just think that becomes too much. And then, you keep going down the list, you've got driveway width, front yard soft landscaping, they all, um, the variances all, uh, they're being flagged really from a lot of the same thing, right? We're dealing with issues mainly in the, in the, uh, the, the front yard. Um, so, that, that, uh, for me is very challenging. Um, and also recognizing that this is not a very big lot. It, it, the depth of it is, I, I understand their challenge, but then, you know, also- It, it, the depth of it is, I understand their challenge, but then, you know, also acknowledge that this might not be the right property for a house of this size or scale with a, with a deck as expansive. There's almost nothing left. So I, I'd be just given the number of variances. Main pedestrian height, I think from a planning rationale standpoint, is the most obvious, easiest point to argue. This immediate area, the front door heights on almost all of these homes are more or less at grade, certainly not above what the bylaw permits. You look at the front elevation, the front entrance is being proposed at the second story of this, which is completely, for me, it just completely, it just says that there's no consideration of the immediate context. And this is where, you know, that large structure, in order to facilitate that high pedestrian entrance height, becomes a problem for me and makes this application not supportable. I guess on the, on this, the side yard setbacks, I'm generally okay with the side yard setbacks. There's, to the applicant's submission, where there is one-point-two meters proposed, it is only for a portion of the building, and then it does have a, a much larger step back to facilitate the walkout. I'm fine with that. I'm also fine with the one-point-eight-three on the other side, but we've had this where the, the massing itself kind of pushes the limits, but then when you add all the structures on top of it, it just takes it a step too far. And I think this is one of those cases. So those are my comments. Do we want to, I mean, you're welcome, other members, welcome to provide comment. If not, we can proceed to a motion, see where it goes. Perhaps Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the application be refused because I don't believe that it respects the character of the neighborhood, and I think it raises very serious concerns about setback and drainage.
All right, do I have a seconder for Mr. Niffel's motion? Okay, that's seconded by Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. The motion carries, the application is refused. Okay, let's keep going. Item number seventeen. Seventy-six Rayner Road. The purpose of the application is to construct a three-story detached dwelling with attached garage, four variances before us, side main wall height, front yard soft landscaping, rear platform area, and number of stories. On file material from the applicant, report from community planning, forum letters in support from seventy-five and eighty Rayner Road. All right, we've got our applicant or agent with us, Mr. Lazlo.
Excuse me, good evening, I'm Drew Lazlo, agent for the owner. My address is one ninety-three Row Avenue.
All right, sir. We'll ask for presentation. Also, just to note, some of the comments out of the community planning report, as I'm sure you're well aware of, if you could address some of those for the committee, it will be helpful.
Of course. Okay, if I may, I would just like to modify variance number one, please. And I'd like to lower it down, that has to do with the sidewall, sorry, sidewall height to eight-point-six-five meters, please.
Okay, thank you for that modification.
Okay, so just quickly, I'll, I'll go through these variances, and then I'll focus on variance number one. So again, just to mention, variance number one has to do with the sidewall height, we're proposing eight-point-six-five, the permitted is seven-point-five. And again, if I may move forward, and then I'll address number one, I'll come back to that one. Variance number two has to do with the front yard landscaping variance, very difficult to conform in this case because the houses along, on that whole block are so close to the front property line. We have an as-of-right porch and an as-of-right driveway, and we just are not conforming. Variance number three has to do with the rear deck area. Now, so variance number three and variance number four are related. Variance number four, which says this is actually a three-story house versus a two-story house, really just has to do, I'm sure you, you, you know, this has been before the committee many times in the past, has to do with the depth of the basement, and as a result of not digging down deep enough in that basement, the basement is considered to be the first floor, second, the ground floor is considered to be the second floor, and so on. And so, and that relates directly to variance number three, which is really referring to the rear deck, but because the ground floor is considered to be the second floor, the rear deck is limited to four square meters. But in essence, this is really a two-story house. According to the bylaw, it's a three-story house. If I may, just go back to variance number one having to do with the wall height, and that's, I know there's a staff report about that. If, if I could, please have page two of my material put up. That's kind of the, yeah, supporting material, thank you. So number two, that's just, next page down, please, thank you for that. That's just a list of, of houses on Rayner Road and in the very near vicinity that have been approved for over seven-point-five meters. We're asking for eight-point-six-five meters. There are houses on Rayner Road that, that have been approved for nine-point-three-five. If you almost take the average of everything that's on the screen now, it ends up being about eight-point-six-five meters, and that's what I'm proposing today. And if staff could just scroll up one more page, please, for me, and the other direction to the last page. Great, thank you. I just did a quick diagram, kind of, the dashed line is an as-of-right eaves at seven-point-five meters high. And the solid line, where it says, you know, proposed roof profile, that's at eight-point-six-five meters. And you can see that, that the impact as a result of going up the extra amount, in my opinion, is quite minimal, and has very little visual impact on, on anything. The, as a, you know, finally, the house conforms to coverage, conforms to all setbacks, conforms to overall height, conforms to length and depth. And that's all I'd like to say, thank you, unless there's any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lazlo. All right, thank you. I believe we have another speaker online.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
It's a neighbor, Haggai...
Hello.
Hi, my name is Haggai Maidenberg, and I live at seventy-eight Rayner Road, which is right next door to this new property in question.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my wife and I wish to formally express our strong opposition to the minor variance application, requesting permission to exceed the permitted height by one-point-two meters, and to reduce the amount of soft landscaping in the front yard. This proposal poses significant concern for the well-being, privacy, and quality of life of our family, as well as the broader environmental resilience of the neighborhood. We urge the committee to consider the following key impacts. Number one, the loss of privacy and overlook into our home. The proposed structure includes windows that will directly overlook into the bedrooms of our children, which face the side of the property in question. This not only infringes on our family's reasonable expectation of privacy in our own home, but also creates a uncomfortable and intrusive living environment for our young children. And number two, the height variance and shadowing. The requested one-point-two-meter increase in height substantially beyond the current zoning limits and out of character with the neighboring homes. A structure of this height would cast significant additional shadows onto our property, particularly impacting our garden and outdoor living spaces. These spaces are integral to our enjoyment of our home and to the health and development of our children. This isn't just a two-story home, like all the other new builds. In practice, it will be a three-story above-ground structure looming over the rest of the street. And number three, the reduced soft landscaping and increased flood risk. Our area is known to have a high water table, and the reduction of permeable soft scape in the proposed design is alarming. Going from the allowed seventy-five percent to sixty-one and a half is not a minor or insignificant amount. Soft landscaping is critical for the stormwater absorption and flood mitigation. The replacement of green space with hard surfaces poses real risks, not only to the proposed site, but also the adjacent properties, including our own. In an era of increasing extreme weather events, this is an environmental and public safety concern that can't be overlooked. We recognize and respect the desire of new homeowners to make their homes their own. However, proposals that disregard established zoning guidelines and interests of the neighboring families erode the character, sustainability, and livability of our community. We strongly urge the committee to reject the variance request in its current form and require by design that adheres to height restrictions, protects neighboring privacy, and maintains adequate soft landscaping for effective drainage and flood management. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Yes, Mr. Kaboo, please.
Yes, just one quick question. Were you able to speak with the applicant regarding some of your concerns?
That's a question for our, our neighbor that just testified.
So are you still there?
Yes, sorry, I can't unmute myself. So yes, he did come around and ask us for a letter of support, and we did inform him that this is our concern.
So some of these concerns seems quite common and which could be addressed amongst neighbors, so, so basically, he was, they were not upping to any changes or modification on the application, if I understand it well?
Correct. The, the response was simply that they will keep a tidy work environment, but nothing addressing the actual concerns for the height variance or the shadows or privacy.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lazlo. No, we're going to go back to Mr. Lazlo, we just finished with your immediate neighbor, apologize. I'd like to hear from Mr. Lazlo now, yep.
As far as privacy is concerned, I mean, we're permitted to have the windows that we are proposing. We, we, it's not like our windows are any higher than sort of the standard window, we have the typical ceiling heights. We do comply to overall roof height. The house is, the overall massing of the house is definitely in keeping with many other houses on the street, my presentation material. That's why I just, I've included a bunch of similar houses on the street. It's up to staff, yeah, that, just to show that, you know, these, you know, I refer to them as stacked houses. There's, they're plentiful on the street, many of them. As far as the shadow is concerned, even if we did comply to the wall height, the shadow being cast would be identical. I think, again, the bottom line here is that we do comply to the overall roof height, and based on that little diagram I showed you, or, you know, the last page of my material, it's up to staff if they want to put it up again, it really is negligible, like the extra wall height that we are asking for really is negligible compared to what we would end up having if we, if we do not get approved for that wall height variance. So they're quite similar. As far as landscaping is concerned, again, I've already explained that the, because all the houses along that block are so close to the front property line, everything we are doing in the front yard complies, it's just the resulting landscaping unfortunately does not comply. And it's, and drainage, we, we, as the committee already knows, we do have to submit a great, a grading plan, you know, required by the city, which will show how everything, you know, drains off the property and won't flow onto any neighboring properties. I believe I've addressed everything, so unless anybody has any questions, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lazlo. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lazlo, the, the planning department is recommending refusal of variance number one, and that's when it was eight-point-nine meters. You've reduced it to eight-point-six-five meters. Have you, have you any information from planning about their response to that reduced meter, meter height?
You know, when I first, when they first reached out to me, all they wanted was a reduction. You know, they, they didn't, never voiced to me that it was such a concern that they were going to make a recommendation to refuse the entire thing. So I really don't have a lot of information. I gave them all the examples, you know, or I gave them many examples of, of other approvals on the street. I, I tried to convince them, they, they didn't give in, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions? All right, let's take this into committee.
I can start us off there, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Bertolo.
Yeah, when I look at these variances, I suppose the most contentious one is the height. Normally, I'm not a big fan of these landscape variances either, but I, I recognize that the backyards are quite generous and the front yards are quite small, and everything's pretty close to the street. So on balance, while I understand the concerns of the neighbors in terms of soft landscaping and drainage, I think on balance, the site has achieved an appropriate amount of landscaping. And given the three-story versus two-story condition, I understand what's happening there with the back porch, and I suppose the slight reduction in exterior main wall height is the one that is most difficult for me. When I look at it in the context of what's happening in the neighborhood and some of the examples provided, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of the realm of where the neighborhood is headed and other projects within the neighborhood. So on balance with the reduction proposed here by the applicant, I think I can get behind this one.
I, I share in your observation. I, I think the sort of question is, is it enough on the side main wall height? It is very hard sometimes to tell, just from a photo, the difference of, you know, point-three meters, you're looking at a foot difference. And oftentimes, when you're provided a long list of properties that were afforded similar variances, it's difficult because you, you have to understand that each property in its own, that variance may not apply in the same way that it applies here. Certainly in a case where you have an application of a side main wall height that is being employed across all four sides, sorry, on both sides of the elevation and for the entire extent of the building, not just for a, a portion or a gable, so it is, it is difficult in, in that respect. But I, I do share in the same, I guess, consideration of the application that you've kind of put out.
I take a slightly different opinion of that, excuse me.
Yep.
Planning doesn't normally submit such a strong recommendation on height. I can't recall the last time I've seen one this strong. And I'm inclined to believe, although I don't know, that the adjustment, which is eight-point-six-five from eight-point-nine, is probably not enough to address their concern that the proposed side main wall... that the proposed side main wall height is not consistent with the existing character of the dwellings and with the neighborhood, does not meet the official plan in the zoning bylaw. I, I'm concerned to hear that they just wanted a reduction and they didn't care what the number was. But I don't have, I don't have a memo that says that. This particular memo from planning troubles me. I, I wish I had, I wish I had the opinion of the planning department on eight point six five in this case. Because as you said, Mr. Chairman, it's a very much a case-by-case scenario. So because we don't have that, I'm not going to be able to support variance number one at this point.
I'm on the fence with the variance too, I have to say. I, I don't know if perhaps a, I mean, we can, we can perhaps start the motion and see where it goes, but I, I'd be willing to put forth a, I know the applicant put a modification on that variance, but I'd, I'd be willing to offer a modified variance. And I'll, in terms of justification, I'll, I'll just direct your attention to the, the front elevation drawing where you can, you can get an indication of how the height is being, how the height is, where the height is required. You know, and again, with these walk-ups, when I see, you know, eleven-foot, over eleven-foot ceilings, finished, should say just shy of eleven-foot, I think there's still some room for further reduction. You've got eleven-two, minus the floor assembly, I will be mindful of that. But you've also got nine-foot finished on the second floor. I, I think there's a room for a little bit of reduction there. Also keeping in mind, I've said this before, when we're dealing with this typology and we want to shove that seven-and-a-half-foot tall drive underneath, and we want to bump that whole first floor up, there has to be, give somewhere to mitigate the massing. Certainly, it, with respect to some of the other properties that, you know, really are proposing a two-story dwelling that don't share the same heights, or don't require the same heights that this does, so.
Well, I mean, listen, I, I think overall, what's proposed here has merit, and I think we're close.
Yeah, it's close.
Based on what I'm hearing, and we have a mechanism to kind of deal with this, we can defer it and ask them to.
Oh, no. I wouldn't get support of that. I mean, just given that we've heard everything at this point, you know? Not to say that perhaps other members might be, sorry.
It's not my favorite.
Mr. Bartolo.
Not my favorite thing to do.
But that's a, perhaps somebody'd like to put forward a motion. We can see where it goes. And if it fails, I'd be happy to put forward my own as an offering. Yes.
Mr. Chair, just for clarity, what, what are you hoping to achieve through a deferral? Planning will not comment. They will not provide an additional number. They never have. They leave it to the discretion of committee. You've heard this for about half an hour now. If there's something that you need for clarity, we're happy to bring back the applicant or any of the neighbors. But you won't get a different planning report.
Well, let me put a motion on the floor and let's see how it goes.
All right. Motion for Mr. Bartolo.
Yeah, I mean, based on my previous comments, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application as modified with variance number one being reduced to eight decimal six five meters.
All right. Do I have a seconder for the motion?
I'm happy to second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, that's seconded by Mr. Kaboo. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Niffel and Mr. Allison will not be voting. All right, that motion carries. The application is approved. As modified.
Thank you so much.
All right. Number eighteen, I know we're getting late in the day. I'm going to keep trudging along. I'm just going to ask staff or members, if you do need a relief break, please just raise your hand and holler. But I'm, I'm going to try to push us through to the end. We're on item eighteen, forty Glenbury Avenue. The purpose of the application is proposed pool and landscaping in the rear yard. One variance, rear yard landscaping, on file material from the applicant and a report from community planning. We have our agent with us.
Try to make this as quick as possible for you guys. I know it's been a long day. Good afternoon. My name is Anthony Zambri from Land Design Canada, Inc., located at seventy-two fifty Keel Street, Unit three four five. I'm here today to representing my clients, Patrick Taylor and Michelle Taylor, from forty Glenbury Avenue, Lot eight forty-one. We're seeking relief from the committee for twelve point three two heartscape variance. I understand that the initial proposal was not supported, but I would like to present the reasons why I believe this request should be considered acceptable and a nature minor. The current conditions on the site present significant challenges, particularly regarding grading and water management. As seen in the drawings, the backyard has virtually no slope. The grading elevation is at the left back corner of the dwelling, which is indicated at one nineteen fifty-nine. That same elevation is shown at the bottom of the property, indicating that there is zero slope. The flat grading creates water management issues as water does not flow naturally away from the property. While we're requesting a higher heartscape percentage than originally proposed, my clients are fully aware of the implications and have explored options to reduce the percentage. Why don't we consider removing the elements like the shed and sauna from the site to bring down the natural, sorry, the heartscape percentage? However, after discussing with my clients, it became clear that these structures are essential for their well-being. Due to private health concerns, it is extremely important for them to have these accommodations in their backyard. The pool itself is small and remaining space is primarily for foot traffic. There's very little room left or anything else, making these accommodations crucial for quality of life. To mitigate the impact of the increased hard scape, my clients are proposing the entire interlock area to be made out of permeable pavers, which comes at a significantly higher cost than traditional materials. The use of permeable pavers will not only enhance the functionality of the space of their young family, but will also address the water management issues. The current soil is hard and poorly draining, and the permeable pavers will improve drainage, reduce water pooling, and minimize water runoff, which could affect their neighbors. This will result in much better water management solution than the incurrence conditions. For comparison, in a similar application I personally had at one eighty-one Montclair Avenue, file number eight, A zero nine sixty-nine dash twenty-three, located less than seven kilometers away, the committee approved a ten point two variance for the heartscape and with stipulation that the ten point two was only to be permeable, the rest was not. This shows that a smaller amount of permeable area was previously proved, and I do believe that, that I believe that the full permeable interlock and proposal we're presenting today goes above and beyond, addressing both heartscape and water management issues. This proposal is not just gaining approval from the committee, but it's also improving the living conditions of my client and their family. They have young children and trying to create a functional and safe outdoor space that is also addressing the drainage issues that's currently there and which will ultimately benefit the entire neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Questions? Mr. Niffel.
Can you just clarify? Fifty percent of the rear yard is to be soft landscaping. And your proposal is that thirty percent of your area is to be landscaping. Is that soft landscaping?
That would help, sorry. You probably didn't hear me. I didn't have my mic on, my mistake. The variance number one, the requirement of the bylaw is that fifty percent of the rear yard is to be used for soft landscaping. And then the note is that with regard to your proposal, the proposed rear yard landscaping is thirty-six point zero three percent. Can you clarify, is that soft landscaping or is that just all landscaping?
That's soft landscaping as currently proposed. And then mentioning in my original introduction that the interlock pieces that we're going to be using is fully permeable, which is actually better than how the original soil and grass is currently on site. So we actually are improving.
But you didn't include the permeable in your soft landscaping, did you?
No, they, they, the original, the way that we had to apply was based on what the interlock is. We did talk to somebody. They said, no, you have to showcase it as, as if it's interlock and it doesn't apply, and it won't be considered a soft.
Okay, so you're soft.
And they refused it.
Your soft landscaping is made up of the pool and the, it looks like there's a, there's a ribbon of grass around the property at the back. Is that correct?
That, that's actually planting soft scape, so that's not, not grass, but gardens. But soft.
Okay, thanks.
Just further to my colleagues' questions. Is it also proposed that the existing deck in the backyard is going to be removed and replaced with sod?
Sorry, just got muted there. So what's, originally what happened was that we wanted to continue the permits and allow my clients to enjoy their summer with a pool. So we submitted a document for the fence enclosure permit with that being shown as sod, and they were approved for that, which was fifty-two percent soft. But we're here today to get an approval for a minor variance to change that sod to a permeable paver.
All right, so can you direct me to your site plan drawing of what is being proposed?
Sure. Are you, are you able, yeah, sure, perfect. You have the plans, right? Okay, excellent, perfect. Yeah, just scroll a little bit. Yeah, so as of, as of right now, that area which is green, which is closer to the house, I guess not green, but it seems it's gray scaled. But that area, we're actually, we're questioning that, that area. Now, again, the house sticks out a little bit on, let's call it the right side. So that's actually considered the rear yard line, where it says proposed one point eight wooden self-closing self-locking pool gate. That, that line all the way across is considered the rear yard. But realistically, from that point to the pool is what we're asking for as, as permeable pavers. It's not, realistically in square footage, it's not much. Like, it's very small in nature, but because the yard is very small, that every square footage is like increased like crazy.
Okay, just so I understand correctly, the drawing is incorrect then? Because you indicate where you have permeable pavers. They seem to stop in alignment with the pool. And then it's showing us that you're proposing sod. But what you're telling me is that you're actually proposing to maintain, or I guess you're not proposing to maintain the existing deck. You want to replace the existing deck. And where it's shown as sod on the drawing is actual a continuation of the permeable pavers. Is that, is that correct? Did I understand?
That's correct, yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure who may have submitted the wrong document here, but the document that should be here is the one where the grass area is to be permeable.
So what did the examiner, I mean, you got an examining notice, right? What did the examiner base his, his review off of? Because this drawing shows us something very different than what you're actually proposing. And I believe, I, I question whether or not the numbers are correct. If you're showing one thing in a drawing, but then you're, you're, you're actually explaining something different.
Well, I, I mean, to me, we, we went over this design a few times. Like, I've, I've had some pretty hard frustrations with, with the city, not going to lie, about going over this, this presentation here. Like, they're, they're, it was pretty disorganized. I don't know why. But realistically, this was the, this was the revised plan to get the pool permit. There, there's, there shouldn't be, like, again, I never posted this, right? But the, this is the revised pool plan, which, which got approved and which was fifty-two percent soft. Again, the, the area that we're looking for is the hard scape percentage of, of what I proposed, and it's that green space that's to be removed and to be permeable pavers.
Okay, so you don't have an actual drawing of what is proposed?
I personally, personally do, yeah. I have it on me right now.
Sure, let's pull that up.
Sure. Do you want any access to?
Yeah, staff will pull it up. Just give, help guide them. This is the drawing I'm looking at on my screen. It's the only drawing I have in my package.
Which is weird. But it's not a big deal because I can provide.
On the left. That big box on the left says proposed grass. Sorry, glass fencing, apologize. Glass fencing. But the, the hatch itself is actually denoted under soft landscaping as sod on the legend.
That's right.
Yes, but my understanding is they've only put this drawing together in order to obtain a pool permit. Now they're coming before us saying they don't want to actually propose sod. They want to have permeable pavers in that area. But they don't have an updated drawing or a site plan that indicates what they're actually proposing. The drawing's out of date. It, the, my understanding, and I'm, I'm going to go back to the applicant to clarify, because I don't like to speak for others, but my understanding is there is a buffer zone around the perimeter of the property that's denoted as gardens. Should be soft landscaping, could be mulch, whatever have you. And that actually kind of carries from all, basically all the way around the property. You can see that. This is just a, yeah, you did, yeah. So I, frankly, I'm a little confused of whether or not the calculation or the variance that's before us is reflective of this drawing or what they actually want to propose. Right, yeah. I'm going to go back to the agent because I, please correct me if I've spoken incorrectly on the file. I just want to make sure we have all of the correct information before us.
Sure. I, I can't understand why they have this drawing. It makes, it makes no sense to me personally, but.
Well, hold on. The drawing is submitted by you, no?
I, no, the, one of the examiners or one of the person dealing with the, had a hard time. I, I'm not really sure. I got a couple of phone calls about it. And I told them which file it was, and there was no problems with it. Now apparently it's a problem. I can't believe it. I mean, it's a super small application. It's very straightforward. I can't believe we're at this position right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we're asking for a percentage. Regardless of the drawings, we're asking for a percentage. And we should just go by off that at the, at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're just, we just pulled up the, the report from planning, and we're just taking a second look at that, was part of our file. Just give us one moment, please.
No problem.
Yep, okay. Yep, okay. Yeah, the, the, the planning report references a drawing dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. The drawing in our package is March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, do we have the March seventeenth drawing? That planning staff referenced in their report?
I have it personally.
To you, Mr. Chair, the only plan that I see on the file is this one on the screen.
That's the only plan on, in the file, right?
Yes.
Okay. I want to just be mindful as well, I, it does appear we have a neighbor that is online to speak to this matter. Okay, so to our agent, we're, let's, let's put a pin in this right now. We are gonna come back to you, I would like to hear from our neighbor at five one three Sutherland Drive.
Mr. Chairman, in fairness to the person who's going to speak, if this drawing is not accurate, that's very difficult for the applicant. I, I don't think that it's fair to ask them to comment on a drawing that isn't correct.
Yeah, but I, I still think we have to go through the process of checking in with them and just identifying what their concerns are, at least. I, I certainly have some concerns with the, the drawing, but hopefully we can maybe get a little bit of clarity. So Steph, do we have our neighbor available? Okay, let's hear from the neighbor.
Yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. Just before I, I forget, I'll just point out, as we're talking about drawings, one thing I noticed as I was preparing for this meeting this afternoon is there's a major tree, like a protected tree that is on the property line that's not reflected on the drawing. A seventy-eight centimeter diameter Siberian elm, that'll have some relevance in a moment. So we're not actually here opposing or supporting the application, we just wanted to highlight some significant concerns that we have. We are the neighbor that shares their rear boundary of their property. And, and we, along with everyone on our side of the street, have dramatic issues with ponding in our yards. My wife and I have resolved the issue in our yard by regrading it, building it, a huge pit in the middle and filling it with gravel. But everyone to our right and our left have dramatic issues with ponding, we have, we have clay soil. And, and that is predominantly, the concern that we're hoping you can assuage and ensure is addressed in the plans before us. A, a couple of things that I might flag, I mean, there's no soft, like, no soft landscaping to handle any, that we worry wouldn't be able to handle any, any water. And at a time that all of us are going through extraordinary measures to manage water on our property, we're just worried and need some reassurance that this plan, which seems to be sort of potentially skirting the minimum standards, will still be okay, that we won't run into any issues. I did email the, the homeowner on Sunday and they've been, to their credit, very responsive. And they pointed out to us the permeable pavers, which we looked into. And I understand that really their success is, or not, is based on the quality of the pavers and the quality of the installation. It'll probably need a, you know, a pretty good base. And that's the reason that I mentioned the tree. We have a large tree that is on our property line. The majority of the trunk is on our side of the property, but it does extend a small amount onto theirs. And the, and the canopy certainly extends onto theirs. And so there is, you know, it's a large tree with a large root system. And so I, I don't know whether, whether they're gonna be able to get the, the kind of base that they're looking for, that, that would be able to enable these permeable pavers to, to, you know, sort of reach their, reach their full potential. And the final thing that I wanted to flag, major thing that I wanted to flag is the sauna located towards the rear of the property. I, I don't know, number one, I don't know what kind of a foundation or not it sits on, but it's gonna be right next to, like, basically a budding archery and sitting right next to the, it, the base of its root system. And I, and I did look up the particular model, this Moonlight Sonata Muskoka model. It's got, you know, a flat sixty-four square centimeter roof that will be sloped towards our property. And the neighbor very properly pointed out to me that there is a small area of soft landscaping behind. Looks as though it'll be about two, sixteen square feet, that's supposed to handle all of the runoff. We want our neighbors to be able to enjoy their backyard, we just want to be able to enjoy ours as well. And with the dramatic issues of ponding that me and all of my neighbors are experiencing, we just would like to see some reassurance that this is not gonna accept those issues. My wife is on the line and I don't know if, if you want to...
No, I think you covered everything, thank you.
All right, since we had your, okay, questions? All right. Okay, let's turn it back to our agent for a response.
Hi, yeah, that's, that was a great comment that the neighbors have made. They, they kind of nailed it with the, the issues that are actually on the site, which is based on the initial introduction for myself, that the property does serve a lot of issues with the existing soil that's there and the no slope. Which is realistically why my client is trying to solve that issue. Trying to remove the, the hard, hard clay and impose a better base and a better drainage system around the property. And also stood, like, instead of the zero runoff of which, of which it goes where it cools, it, it then is, then solves with the permeable pavers and the base changed. So I, I do appreciate that, like, I, and of course, the, the contractors that would be on site would be using all the tools and necessarily information from manufacturers for these permeable pavers.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you very much to our speakers, let's take this matter into committee.
Mr. Chair, so I still wonder how we can make a decision based on a drawing which is not the, the right one.
We, we can put the drawing back up, there is a March seventeenth date on it, on the upper right. But I also want to just draw your attention to that if you do not attach a plan drawing to your decision, it's the text version of the variance that applies. So that is what the building permit, if you do not attach a plan to your decision.
Just the numerical value of the variance and then they have...
That's the only thing that would be on the decision if you choose not to apply it to a plan.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
But it is important that you understand if there are different plans, that's totally within your right. But you can see in the upper, on, on the right-hand side, if we zoom in, there is a March seventeenth date. I'm not sure if the planner just quoted the wrong date, but this is, this appears to be the only plan we have on file.
Yeah.
No, go back to, if you could just go back to the site plan. Right there, on the right, it's on an angle. Underneath LD, you'll see a March seventeenth date. On the right, bottom right, it's vertical, there it is. The first iteration says March seventeenth.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. Yeah. Maybe I can get us started, I, I think regardless, we've got a, we've got the issue of the, the drawing itself. You know, it's, this, it's, as a committee, you know, it's really hard to approve variances just based on numbers. Because we're not, when we consider variances, we're not just looking at the quantitative aspect of the variance, we're looking at the qualitative application. So more specifically, if somebody's coming to us asking for a reduction in soft landscaping, we need a plan so that we can assess whether that's an appropriate application. Is that soft landscaping being deployed at the, at important points? Are there reasons for the reduction? So there's, there's kind of that issue that I have some concern with. The other side of it, put all of that aside, this is a relatively new build. They had a blank slate with this. If you look at the site plan and, you know, you look out, you zoom out and you look at the, the kind of immediate context, there really is not much left of the backyard, it's just becomes a hardscape space with a small buffer around the periphery. And I, I just, you can imagine if every neighbor on the street proposed something similar with a reduction in soft landscaping, only offering, you know, a slim edge condition to absorb water and, and whatnot. So, you know, I, I acknowledge also that, you know, a lot of the soft landscaping, as is their right, is being accounted for the fact that there's water via swimming pool, which is kind of towards a soft landscaping. But, you know, also consideration of the fact that if that's really, you know, fifty percent or half of what you're proposing is soft, you know, it's, it's gonna be a pool cover half the year. So, you know, it's not just about drainage, we have, you know, we share... There's a whole, the official plan gets into this, but, you know, there is, there are other, there are other ecosystems and species in our city that depend on these ecosystems. And if we just eradicate them and replace them with hardscaping, the question is, well, what are we left with in the end? So I think just given the fact that this is a relatively new application, I, I, I struggle with it in terms of supporting. Certainly from a, certainly from a standpoint of the four tests, it, it becomes difficult to, to support, but... Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have difficulty with this application. I'm disappointed that the, that the drawing is not accurate. I mean, it would be nice to know how the various components in the rear yard were gonna be arranged. But I think bottom line, there isn't enough soft landscaping in the rear yard. That's basically what the planning department said, that's what we've heard. And to be honest, most of this hearing from beginning to end has had, has been punctuated by people appealing for us to maintain landscape provisions because of environmental concerns. I, I see nothing in the planning department report that I question, and I'm completely in support of it. I therefore can't support this application.
Yeah, I maybe also mentioned that the trees also become a bit of a concern, how...
Well, and they, they also...
There's impact.
Which, your point, how, how many trees are gonna grow on that little strip of grass around the edge?
Yeah. And, and I mean, we've seen this in applications as builds, where you zoom out on, you look at an aerial view and you just see a gray square in a, in a field of green, which is everybody else's backyard. I, I just don't think it's a, it's a fair, especially on a, a brand new build like this, where you have carte blanche to essentially build whatever you want, right? I, I don't know, Bartolo, you might feel differently?
No, I move in favor of denial of this application. I don't think it meets the intent numerically, I don't think it's there. Organizationally, it's not there.
Yeah.
I think it's unsupportable.
All right, unless, Mr. Kabula, are you, are you okay to proceed to motion? You have any comments you'd like to provide?
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chair. I think I would put forward a motion to refuse this application because it does not meet the, for the details. And based in an established neighborhood would not be, it's not really part of the social neighborhood. So I would put it on a motion to refuse the application.
All right, do I have a seconder, a second by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That's unanimous, the application is refused. Let's take a short break and then we'll conclude, item nineteen through number twenty-three. Five minutes, okay, for everybody? Okay, thank you. Thank you. What's happening?
Uh, variance number one, number two, number six, number seven, and number eight.
All being removed. One, two, six, seven, and eight being removed.
Uh, yes, sir, and the drawing before you is a revised version, so that reflects, uh, the changes, uh, the, um, and we've seen the planning, um, the staff report.
I have, I was gonna ask, no issues substantially in accordance with, uh, in relation to variance four?
No problem.
Yes, yeah, there's a recommendation, uh, with respect to variance number four, uh, from planning. Uh, so the agent, uh, is aware of that. Uh, and I do.
Yes, sir.
I, yes, uh, that's the latest plan attached to our staff report, sir. On page three of the report. It's received on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, and, uh, as well, urban forestry number two, you're aware of that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All fine.
Alright. Um, okay, that said, uh, I'm gonna ask again if, uh, my colleagues would like, uh, full presentation from you, uh, or in the alternative, if they have any, uh, specific questions, given that, uh, there are a number of modifications, uh, some of the variances have been removed. Uh, that's correct, we're looking at, uh, variances three, variance four, uh, for the north side yard setback and number five, so two side yard setbacks and, uh, a number of stories. Yes, a question, uh, for agent from Mr. Bartolo.
Yeah, just for clarification, Mr. Shakiri, uh, the plans received by the committee of adjustment thirteen May, are those, do those reflect the modifications? It's, uh, on your drawing, it's the twelve May COA two revision note, is that the right one?
Sorry, I was muted, um, yes, um, Mr. Bartolo, it reflects all the changes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Shakiri, could you provide some background and justification on that, uh, north yard, uh, setback, please?
Um, yes, I have, uh, submitted some support, uh, material. Um, the, uh, lot is, uh, is a very narrow lot, it's, um, on the side, uh, on the side for the zoning of this neighborhood, uh, most of the houses have, uh, smaller side yards, uh. Um, I have depicted the existing house, uh, by red color. Um, on the north side, both on the north side and the south side, we are improving the, um, side yards, uh, and, uh, also, uh, the house, the neighboring house of number eighty-seven, um, has been granted the same variance of two feet, uh, given that, uh, they, uh, do have a narrower lot, uh, than the zoning bylaw. Uh, I have, uh, submitted evidence, uh, of the approval on the eighty-seven, and, um, also submitted, uh, a whole lot of other approvals in the area. Um, so in that sense, uh, we're requiring that variance zero point sixty-three only for the garage portion, um, not the entire wall, um, and, um, uh, it is precedent, the reason for that is the lot is on the side for its zone. It's a narrow lot, um, and, um, the planning, uh, also is fine with that, that's why they made that, that condition. We keep the site plan as is, so we do not go ahead and, uh, use that sort of side yard for the entire building. Which is acceptable by us.
Uh, understood, I, I see on the survey here, it is quite tight with the existing condition, and the neighbor is quite tight as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions, and, uh, I, I don't mean to, uh, it, you know, if any members require a more fulsome presentation, uh, please, uh, please advise, happy to, uh, to, uh, hear submission from Mr. Shakiri. Just waiting for. Mister Kaboo, Mister Phil, I, uh, checking in with you, do you guys, uh, require a presentation? Alright, okay, I just, uh, being, uh, mindful, uh, of rushing, if I am, uh, please, uh, just, uh, speak up. Okay, uh, Mister Shakiri, doesn't appear we need a, a full presentation, I, uh, appreciate the submission with respect, uh, to the rationale provided for the side yard setback. Um, if it's alright with you, it looks like we can take this into committee for a decision.
Yes, sir, by all means, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, let's take this into committee, Mister Nipfil.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, the only part of this application that I had any difficulty with was the north side yard setback, but as the applicant indicated, and his planning has mentioned, it doesn't extend for the full length of the building.
Yes.
It only extends for the length of the garage. My concern was maintenance of those two walls, because the adjacent property also has a very narrow setback. I think with regard to the limitation on the, um, on the amount of length that's subject to that side yard setback, this is quite reasonable. Uh, and with the planning department, um, recommendation that we tie it to the site plan, uh, I think this is a, a supportable application.
Uh, yes, I would agree, I also note, uh, it's nice to see, although minor, just a slight, uh, step back on that front main wall, uh, towards eighty-three, as their front yard, uh, or their front main wall is actually set further back, so it's nice to see, uh, that this, uh, massing is responding, uh, to its immediate context. Um, I would say, uh, to your comment about the point six-three meter setback, um, I, I have a point six meter setback myself, uh, variance that I received, um, it's probably about the bare minimum, it's not great, uh, it is, it's fully accessible, uh, um, it's a serviceable space, would I use it every day? Uh, no, uh, in hindsight, would I have maybe come off my neighbor a little bit more, to provide myself a little bit access, maybe some consideration? Um, but I, I would say, yeah, but about point six meter is about, uh, I think the bare minimum in terms of, uh, something that is, uh, becomes accessible. Uh, any other comments, uh, we can proceed to motion? Mister Kaboo, yeah? What, my address? No. Although I'm sure my neighbor would like, would, would take the opportunity to, uh, speak if she could. Alright.
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve this application as modified based on variances number one, two, six, seven, and eight being removed, and, uh, also based on the conditions, uh, uh, suggested by the staff report that variance number four be developed substantially in accordance with the sa- uh, site plan drawing, and then the urban forestry conditions.
Yes. Uh, right, we have a motion by Mister Kaboo. Uh, do I have a seconder for that motion, Mister Bartolo, thank you, all in favor? That's unanimous, uh, that application is approved, as amended, and with condition. Alright, item number twenty-three oh eight, Woborn Avenue, the purpose of the application is to construct a new detached garage in the rear yard. Two variances before us, rear yard landscaping and setback from a rear lot line, on file material from the applicant, and two form letters in support. Welcome, sir, thank you for coming down today. Uh, your name and address for the.
Andrew Trotter, eighty-one St. Clarence Avenue, Toronto.
Alright, just give us one moment here. I will ask my colleagues whether they require a, a presentation from you. Know you've come down, uh, I do, will provide you an opportunity, uh, to address the committee if you like, but it, it appears this one seems pretty straightforward.
I think the cover letter covers it.
Yeah.
It worked with planning, I sent it to planning, they, I talked with planning, and they, I sent the cover letter, and they, uh, they, they seem to understand the situation, so.
Yeah, it's, I, I think it's pretty, uh, not to get too far ahead of myself, but pretty, pretty typical, uh, for these types of lots, uh, and expected, actually, in a way, that, that the first twenty or so feet off of the rear lot line is gonna be utilized for parking, whether or not there's a structure over the car or not.
Yeah, and they have such a beautiful garden, too, like, it's gorgeous.
Yeah.
But, uh, we're trying not to interfere with that.
Uh, but in terms of the, um, the soft landscaping, uh, that is between the, uh, front main wall of the proposed garage and the rear main wall of the house, that's.
That's existing.
And to remain?
To remain.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, members, uh, any questions? Okay, if I may, uh, we can proceed to, uh, into committee?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, alright, uh, let's take this into committee. Uh, Mister Nipfil.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I think this is very straightforward, um, I think the request is moderate and, and reasonable, I, I don't see that there's many other options to increase the amount of landscaping. Um, and as you indicated, even if the pro- if the garage wasn't there, it would be used for parking, so I don't see that the garage is adding to, uh, a problem with landscaping, I'd like to move approval without any conditions.
Second, Mister Kaboo, all in favor? That's unanimous, you have your approval, sir. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks so much.
Yep. Alright, item twenty-one, twenty-two Beechwood Avenue, the purpose of this application is to construct a new dwelling. Eight variances, uh, before the committee, front yard setback, building length, building depth, rear yard setback, west side yard setback, east side yard setback, lot coverage and front stair width, on file material from the applicant. I see a report from community planning, as well as a late letter in support from eighteen Green Gates Court. Uh, and we've got our agent with us in person, welcome, sir. Uh, I understand this may be a modified application?
Yeah, yes, based on the committee of, uh, adjustment, uh, planning department, yes.
Alright, take us through that, uh, we'll work off the public notice, take us through the variances you'd like to modify.
Yeah, uh, good evening, uh, member of the committee of adjustment.
Oh, sorry. I apologize, I, I apologize, before I do, I, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, uh, for the record, please state your name and address.
Yeah, I, uh, my name is Mehran Heydari from PMP Design Group, I'm the designer and the authorized agent for the application related to twenty-two Beechwood Avenue.
Alright.
And my address is one zero nine zero Dulme's Road, unit four oh two. Yeah, following, uh, feedback from the planning staff, we have made several revision to our application, we also met the neighbors, and we reviewed the proposed changes with, which, uh, have been incorporated into the updated drawings submitted as part of the revised zoning notice. We are now submitting the following update and changes to the application, variance number one elimination, regarding the frontier setback, variance number two elimination of the variance of the maximum building length.
Hold on, sir, I just missed that, uh, variance number one.
Yes, number.
Oh, eliminated, I see.
Yes.
Apologize.
Number two, regarding the building lengths is elimination, eliminated, uh, variance number three, uh, about the building depth is eliminated. Variance number four, modification of the rear yard setback from five point seven six meter to seven point zero one meter. And variance number seven, regarding the lot coverage, is eliminated. And we are agreed with the staff recommendation regarding the rear yard setback.
Just wanna make sure, uh, we captured all of that, uh, just to, uh, removal of variance one, two, three, modification of variance four to seven point zero one, uh, eliminate variance seven, and that's it, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Alright, um, we do have, uh, some other speakers, for this item? Alright, okay.
Actually, he's the owner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, through you, Mister Chair.
Yep.
Uh, we contacted the neighbor that's on the list, and she mentioned that, uh, she already spoke with them and resolved the issue.
Oh, wonderful.
Don't want to talk anymore.
Okay, and, uh, do we have any other, we don't have any other neighbors? Fantastic. Give us a moment?
Sure.
I have a, uh, you know, I, I just wanted to ask you, um, a little bit about the, uh, rationale, uh, behind our side yard, uh, setback. We got five and six, uh, being proposed on the east and west side is one point two two. Um, any specific reason for that, uh, number? On both sides?
Uh, yes, uh, I think I need to, um, start with a s- a small presentation. You know, please, uh, refer to the drawing A zero one in the supporting presentation document, the drawing, uh, presents the new site plan where the existing condition are shown in the, uh, in the orange, and the proposed development is shown in the black and white. As you can see, we have significantly improved the side yard setback in the revised proposal, additionally, in the property previously received the committee of adjustment approval for the side yard setback under the previous application submitted by the previous owner. The approval allowed us to setback zero point nine and zero point seven meter, in comparison of revised proposal increased both sites setback to one point two two meter, uh, representing a clear improvement over the previously approved variances. And if you see the second page of the presentation, you will find the supporting data showing approved side yard variance for properties in the same section of the street under the same zoning bylaw. While some home on the other opposite side of the Beechwood Avenue fall under a different zoning, the north side, where the twenty-two Beechwood located shares consistent zoning, previously, we have highlighted the several nearby approval for the side yard setback from zero point nine to, to one point five meter approved in the committee. And also, if you look at the, this drawing on the screen, there is a yellow part. The yellow part is frontier setback of the just ten lots beside the twenty-two Beechwood. And if you see, the, uh, the, the yellow highlighted area of the city map included our submission, we have identified a group of ten house on the outside of the street that maintain the larger frontier setback than the street average. To respect the established character of this part of the neighborhood, our proposed frontier setback remains consistent with the average of the these homes, approximate, uh, around the eighteen point nineteen meter. So the variance we are seeking for the rear yard setback result, and also the side yard setback is a result of the existing condition and technical in nature. Because, uh, I wanted to have the character of the frontier setback of the street as it is, so, and also, if you see, we don't have the lot coverage variance, it means the size of the house is matched with the character of the area, and also, the house itself is just one story top of the garage. You know, right now, nowadays, we have the different application, there is a two-story above the garage, this house is just one story, it means the lot coverage is covered by the garage that is making the house smaller, for incorporating the required size of the house by my client, so we need to, uh, use the approved variance of the side yard setback in the previous application, and right now, if you see the next page of the, uh, I can, uh, show you, the house is the existing house, I put, I superimposed the existing house to the proposed house, and the, the red part that you see over there is the improvement of the side yard setback, so actually, we are seeking for the one point two two meter side yard setback on the application, but actual condition, we are improving the existing condition of the two-story existing houses, it, yeah.
Alright, thank you for that submission.
You're welcome.
Uh, you've thoroughly answered, uh, my question.
You're welcome, thanks.
Okay, uh, any other questions? For our agent? No, okay, thank you, sir, you can sit down, I'm gonna take this matter into committee, brief discussion, and motion. Uh, just carrying over from my questioning about the side yard setback, um, very, I had a modest, uh, concern, uh, with the side yard setback, um, but I, I, to the applicant's, uh, submission, I, 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 I think did a good job of, um, explaining this particular uh, stretch of the street is somewhat limited by a, a larger front yard setback, uh, in addition to the fact that they're improving, uh, the, uh, side yard, even though it's a new building, they are improving, uh, the condition on both sides, um. I will point out, uh, you know, oftentimes, when we see a, uh, variance for a setback, uh, we may have a number like one point two. Um, I'll just give as an example, in a lot of cases, uh, there are neighborhoods where, uh, the block form is, uh, set up in a way such that where one side yard setback may be one point two meters, uh, there may be a greater setback on the other side, so the cumulative effect, uh, when you put all the properties together is essentially a larger separation, uh, between the homes. Uh, there's a bit of give and take. Um, I also, uh, I think I picked up on some of the, uh, the submission from the applicant where there was, uh, you know, they were showing a one point two meter setback, but it applied to a chimney breast, but I, I, I think I, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied that, uh, this is a, it, those side yard setbacks are, are supportable, um. So, um, I, I, I don't have any concern, I, I don't know, uh, how my colleagues feel, but, um, open up the floor to them.
Um, thank you, Mister Chair, um, with the modifications made here and the coordination with planning, and the improvements, albeit still asking for a variance, but the overall improvements, uh, I think it's a supportable application, I, you know what, I actually have to commend the applicant here on some of the the superimposed elevation improvements and stuff like that, they're very helpful for us, I think.
Yes.
They're good products and good drawings, and I would encourage you to keep doing that, so that's helpful, thank you. And, uh, on the whole, um, I think it's a supportable application, and I think you did a good job.
Motion?
Mister Chair, before, sorry, can I just say, if, if you choose to approve this, the planning report has a condition.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna make sure that the site plan in that planning report is the most, we just don't wanna, if, should you choose to approve it.
Thank you for that.
And could you exercise that condition, we just wanna make sure that we're not attaching it to a, a dated one.
Yeah, but we have the ability to avoid a lot of headache and pain, uh, now, by catching these things, so, um, uh, th- thank you, uh, Mister Secretary Treasurer, um, that is the correct site plan? Alright, and, uh, to the, uh, I, I presume, uh, no, uh, objection, uh, if approval was given that, uh, the condition tied to the site plan substantially in accordance with, uh, would, would be acceptable?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, I realize we're in committee, uh, so, uh, Mister Bartolo, perhaps a motion?
Uh, no problem, Mister Chair, um, so I'll put forward a motion to, uh, approve this application subject to the following conditions, variance number one, two, three, and seven be eliminated, variance number four be modified to seven decimal zero one meters, and that the, uh, proposed rear yard setback be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing attached to the uh, staff report of twenty-two May as attachment number one.
Right, do I have a seconder, Mister Nipfil, all in favor? That is unanimous, your application is approved, sir. Yep, and thank you for coming down in person. Alright. Number twenty-two, one thirty-nine Shepherd Avenue East, the purpose of this application is to propose a second story addition to the existing medical building, including the provision of parking spaces. One variance before us, related to the number of parking spaces, I've got material from the applicant on file. We have our agent with us.
Mister Chair and members, Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of one thirty-nine Shepherd Avenue East.
Welcome back, Miss Evangelista. Alright.
We're saving the best for last.
Second last.
Little joke, 'cause you, I know you've had a really long day.
Um,
um.
Miss Evangelista, I.
We have one variance.
Yes, uh, yeah, before you get going, um, actually, I'll, you know what, I've, I've spoken enough, I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to you, just to provide us a little bit of context. I, I can't speak for my colleagues, I, I don't think I require a full presentation, but I, I am gonna ask them, uh, but first, uh, I would like, uh, you to provide just a few introductory comments to the application for us.
Sure, absolutely, um, this is an existing, uh, medical building, uh, in the Young and, uh, Shepherd area, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Yeah? Beautiful, alright, um, and what we're proposing, if you refer to, um, I did, um, provide a submission with some photos, just to, to give you an idea of where we will be adding, a very small addition, we're adding an addition of sixty-nine point six eight square meters. Um, you'll probably see it better on page two of my submission, right, page two? So you see that top right photo? So we are, we are adding an addition to that area there, we are short five parking spaces. Um, we provided a transportation report, our transportation department, um, they are okay with, um, with the deficiency in parking, because as you know, this is a very, um, you know, this area is utilized, and, uh, has TTC, uh, buses, we have the Young Shepherd, uh, subway, um, the, I also included an area, um, map of all the pub- public parking in the neighborhood. A lot of the, the people that do go to this clinic, they typically Uber, um, you know, be it they have some type of procedure, or, uh, that, you know, they don't, they don't typically drive, I do go to this, um, clinic, this dermatologist, and I've never had a problem with parking, so I can say that with great conviction. Um, and like I said, planning, uh, they are okay with the application, they, they are totally in acceptance of it, transportation also is in acceptance of it, and if you have any questions, I am open to any questions that you may have.
Mister Nipfil.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Mister Evangelista, could you just give me the ration, if it's other than, um, the fact that there's good TTC, what the rationale is for the reduced parking? And is it physically being reduced, i- is, what's existing on the property right now?
We have, we currently have fifteen parking spaces.
And are they five?
We currently have fifteen.
And are five for visitors?
Yeah. Well, so now what we're doing, at, at the time, yeah, that was what, um, zoning mentioned, however, we are, um, offering, you know, should any employees or any, anybody from the building itself, um, they do use the, you know, they do have the opportunity to, um, be given a subsidy for transit. Um, a lot of them don't, I'm not sure why, um, the zoning examiner did state that, but the fifteen parking spaces, I can say that any, at any given time, I've gone just to visit the, the facility myself, um, in the morning, mid-morning, afternoon, mid-afternoon, and at any given time, I've only seen perhaps maybe two, two parking spots that have been used, um, perhaps maybe three at most. Um, so I'm not, I'm not foreseeing, um, a problem with the, uh, parking in the area, uh, and the deficiency, the, the reason for, there is a, a pharmacy. The, the reason for, there is a pharmacy on the main floor, so they come in, they stop, they pick up, and they leave. Um, transportation, overall, they feel that, um, it is, the shortfall is justified because there is, um, the site does have excellent access, um, to reliable public transit. There are multiple, um, TTC bus routes. It is in proximity of the Young Shepherd subway lines. And, um, and like I said, a lot of people do, uh, use Uber and are, or are driven in.
Of the fifteen spaces that exist, are five designated for visitors?
Um, at this, at this time, but that's changing. So we are, we are designating, um, because we do have two mobilities. So, uh, and this was a, a conversation that we spoke to with, with, I spoke to with zoning because we have two mobility and then, um, there is the, they, they counted the Bs on the site plan. But I, I can, um, with great conviction, um, through you, Mr. Chair, member Nipphil, all fifteen spots are being used for, um, patients of the, of the building. And the transportation report, um, also states that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Uh, let's take this into committee. Thank you, Miss Evangelista. Mr. Nipphil?
Mr. Chairman, the only question I have, notwithstanding what Miss Evangelista said about the, uh, the parking not being well-used and there's a lot of vacant spaces. In order to comply with what's written here, do we not need to have five of those spaces designated as visitors? Otherwise, we haven't met the second half of the variants.
That's how they're labeled on the site plan.
Yeah, I know, but... I'm, I, I guess my concern is, do we need something on, on site that indicates five of the spaces are for visitors? Things could change and people, uh, tendencies could change and they could all be used by occupants of the building, I guess. I'm just, I'm more, I, I'm not concerned with the reality. I'm concerned with meeting what's before us. And if we need to designate the five spaces, we could put that in as a condition. Um, otherwise, I'm fine with the application.
Yeah, certainly from an operational standpoint, as a business owner, you'd wanna have some spaces available for your clients to come or they, they're just not gonna, you know? Yeah, it's, to, to Miss Evangelista's submission too, I, I suspect in this location, you'll have some, uh, of your regular employees, uh, commuting to work, given the proximity to the Bayview and Young, uh, station. Yeah. Okay. So perhaps, uh, by way of, uh, condition to address that, Mr. Nipphil, uh, the inclusion of the visitor, uh, spaces? Is that a?
Signage.
Through signage?
Signage.
Okay. I'm, I'm surprised not to see, uh, something formal, formal from transportation in this regard, given that this is a very much a transportation application. Um, but anyways, uh, we'll, we'll deal with what we have before us. Um, okay? Yeah, fair enough. Uh... Oh, we'll get you back, get your microphone on, Mr. Nipphil. So Miss Evangelista can hear what you're saying.
I was just complimenting you on showing adjacent buildings on the site plan. It's something we really, really appreciate because it allows us to, uh, assess the context. So congratulations on a full site plan.
Um, all right. So, motion, Mr. Nipphil?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have no difficulty with the application. I'd like to move approval of the application, um, subject to the five visitor parking spaces being signed on site.
All right. Do I have a second or? Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? That's unanimous. The application is approved.
Thank you.
All right. Last item of the day, item twenty-three, thirty-three oh nine Young Street. The purpose of this application, the proposal to construct a three-story addition and a three-story rear addition. Five variances before us, omission of residential parking, omission of visitor parking, omission of waste and, uh, recyclable material storage, platform location and building setback from a rear lot line. On file, material from the applicant, memo from Transportation Services and a memo from TTC. We have our agent with us.
The planner for the owners of the property at thirty-three oh nine Young Street.
Your name?
Tay Ruck.
Welcome, sir. Um, all right. Uh, before we get started, um, I just wanna get some, uh, question out of the way. Um, I noticed that in the transportation report, they are requesting deferral of the application. Um, perhaps you can provide a little bit of update as to where things are at with, uh, in your discussion with transportation staff?
Yes, so subsequent to seeing the report online, um, I did reach out to transportation and nobody had gotten back to me prior to this hearing. Now, I'll leave it, I can leave it in committee's hand, but they're requesting a parking study for the parking variances that are being proposed. And quite frankly, I'm not quite sure what the point of that exercise is, uh, considering that there is really no space, uh, on the site to provide the number of parking spaces, for that matter, any parking spaces on site. In addition to the fact that this is on Young Street, um, if you look at the presentation materials on the area context map, there isn't a laneway that goes behind these commercial units that run onto, uh, Young Street. Whereas on the west side of Young, across the street from the subject site, there is a clear laneway that is, uh, that is along, uh, the rears of those commercial properties. And frankly, if you look at the immediate block of the subject site, uh, the block south of us and the block north of us, these are the three blocks that don't have laneways on the east side of Young. And none of those space, none of those, uh, commercial dwellings or mixed-use buil- buildings have parking provided on site, 'cause there is no opportunity for that. Um, this proposal currently as it stands is a commercial or cleaners, dry cleaners at grade with two residential that currently exist above this, above the commercial unit. The proposal is for a third story addition and a third three-story rear addition resulting in one additional residential unit. So the total will now be three residential units above and the dry cleaner business remaining at the, uh, grade. So I ca- I'll leave it in committee's hands to, if you feel it's appropriate to defer it because a parking study is required, but quite frankly, I think it's a, I think it's, um, you know, not to be too blunt, a waste of money for my client to go through a process where we all know the answer to, uh, what we're, what we're bringing here. It can, especially given the context of this, uh, neighborhood.
All right. Sir, uh, your submission then that, uh, so right now, the existing condition, there is no parking on the site?
There is, so, there is a, so if you go to the site plan on my presentation, the third slide?
Yep.
Um, you'll see that there's a gray hash area. So there's a, so this air, this lot isn't a, uh, regular, it's an L configuration. There is a small driveway that goes to Glen Forest. My client, who is the owner of the dry cleaning business, uh, uses it once in a while to just basically unload materials or, uh, supplies. But there isn't any parking for, there, no park, no re- no tenants park in that area and it's temporary. So it's not even being utilized as parking. What that driveway is kind, is used for at this point right now, and it relates to one of the variances, is that the garbage bins or the recycling bins are contained at that rear area and then wheeled out towards Glen Forest Road on pickup day. So that's the current situation. And if you notice the pinch point of that driveway, it's approximately two point seven five meters at the curb of Glen Forest, but it pinches in as you go further in towards the site or to the rear of the site. It's approximately two point three meters wide. So it's not the greatest of turning radius to, uh, for cars to begin with, um, even if this addition was to occur. Um, and you'll note that if you look at the pictures of the subject site, uh, on the second slide, uh, just above it, uh, there is a, uh, what I, I guess, an auto repair or car, or tire repair facility, uh, just to the nor- or just to the east of the subject site. And the only reason that the car can get through right now is because it's not fenced in between the rear lot line and the property to the east. If it was fenced, there's no chance to get any cars in and out of the subject site.
Um, all right. Um, explain to me about the loading. So we get rid of the parking, you've still got a commercial, uh, uh-
Yeah.
-business, right? And then now also, you know, I, I, I take your submission, you know, it's on Young Street. Uh, you know, not, it, it doesn't, not necessary that the, perhaps the residents may need parking, but, uh, what happens, uh, during move-in or move-out deliveries, that kinda thing?
So, but like I said, there is that driveway that leads onto Glen Forest Road. Um, and they would park in that driveway and unload and go into the rear of the du- uh, unit as necessary. That's what would happen.
Right. And, um, would it be possible to, uh, maneuver like a three-point turn so that cars going in can turn around and then exit out? Or is it a requirement they'd have to back out as a result of the, uh, reduced, uh, area at the rear?
I'm sure that with many, more than a three-point turn, you could maneuver out of it, but it wouldn't be the most convenient way of, uh, accessing. So it would literally have to be front in and front out.
All right. All right, fair enough. Okay.
And I, I don't know if you want me to speak to the other variances, but the only variances that relate to the actual building itself is the rear, uh, setback. And once again, if you look at that map that I provided on the area context map, I've highlighted those properties that are in green that are, have reduced, uh, rear yard setbacks. And once again, as I indicated earlier, the, the rear, uh, yard or the rear of the building is facing a commercial or car garage or tire shop at the rear. So from an impact perspective, um, it wouldn't be, uh, backing onto or encroaching onto a residential space or a residential backyard. Um, it would be just to the side of the existing, uh, commercial or auto building right now.
All right. Uh, and any, uh, thought or consideration for, uh, waste? I think you mentioned that waste was, uh, stored at the rear and then pulled out onto-
Correct.
Glen Forest? That's correct. So I, I presume the, uh, remaining area back there will just house the bins? Is that, that's fair to say?
Correct. That's, that's correct, sir.
All right. Questions for our agent? Mr. Nipphil?
It's a very quick one. On the ground floor plan, there's the existing commercial space. That's the dry cleaner, I believe, right?
Correct, sir.
And then the area behind is proposed commercial space. Is that an extension of the same unit?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No other questions? Thank you. Uh, we will take this matter into committee now.
Uh, I can move us along there, Mr. Chair, if you want.
Thanks, Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, listen, I, I'm sympathetic towards these very tight urban sites. They hit a lot of the points that we want them to hit in terms of use, using existing infrastructure in very dense areas, adding some additional housing stock-
Housing, yeah.
-to a, to a, like a very dense urban area. Uh, the design looks good from my point of view as well. It's a very difficult site. They're making it work right now. I, I don't see them wanting to disturb how they handle, uh, pickup and drop-off and waste handling for their own business. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think they need a parking study. I think it's gonna be useless. It's a very tight urban area. You're not gonna get any legal parking spaces, uh, in there, uh, now or, or afterwards.
Unless you sub- substantially reduce the rear main wall of the building, but then you're doing so at the, yeah.
It becomes a-
Reduction of housing.
It becomes- You do.
Still have access problems with the pinch point.
Yeah, you have quite a, quite a bit of a pinch point. So, um, and in the grand scheme of things, we're talking a few, like two residential units and a commercial unit that's already existing.
On Young.
On Young Street. So, um, if we can't support, like, increased density with some conditions here, then we can't do it anywhere, in my opinion. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the application. It can be a motion in about two seconds.
Yes. Uh, yeah, there's TCC memo, uh, and some conditions as well noted in there.
I, they have advisory comments in there, but... Yeah, conditions and comments.
Oh.
Yes, they have-
Thank you, Mi- thank you, Secretary Treasurer, yeah. They have their own matrix.
Yes, you are correct.
Yeah. And, uh, I suppose nothing of, uh, transportation, 'cause we're overriding that, uh, request for the study?
Okay. Uh, yeah, I, I've read the TTC conditions here. Um, I don't think they're gonna be too onerous for the applicant. Uh, I'll put forward the motion to approve this application subject to, uh, conditions one and five of the TTC memo attached.
All right. Second by Mr. Nipphil, all in favor? That's unanimous. The application is approved, sir. All right. Uh, that concludes-
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course. That concludes our hearing today. The time is now seven twenty PM. Uh, we are adjourned. You want a motion? All right. A motion to adjourn? Mr. Nipphil, second by? Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, that motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you. Yes, and thank you, staff.